Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Thursday, September 28th. And our agenda for this evening is, contrary to the printed agenda, we will not be approving any minutes. We will have a discussion and a vote on the Capital Outlay Budget Proposal for Fiscal 2014. We will hear from the School Committee and discuss the school budget and take a vote on our recommended school budget for fiscal year 2014. And then we will have an update from the School Fields Committee. And we will, in the process of that, we will be considering the proposed warrant articles related to the building of the School Fields, three articles from the School Committee, and one petition article. Following that, we will have discussion of, continuing discussion of the proposed noise by law that's a petition article. Following that, we will be having a discussion of the, how to, what to do about the town's right of first refusal on an affordable unit at Ridgewood Crossing. And that is what we have on deck for tonight. So, I think we'll just move right along, and I'll invite Tom Piles, who represents the Capital Outlay Committee, to join us. And he and Town Administrator Ted Alexiatis are going to fill us in on where we are since we last saw you. But first, I have to find it.
Thank you. It's been a very long week since I last saw you. And this could be a very brief discussion. The Capital Outlay vote and recommendations that we had as of last Thursday night entailed Since that time, it has come to light that a town administrator would like to consider a committee to take a look at the real property and the vehicles of the fire department in a grand overlook as to the vehicles and the real estate and the location of the firehouses. Part of that comes from an increased needs for occasions and calls in South Hingham. The Capital Outlay Committee endorses that concept. In light of that, we thought that it might be prudent to defer the fire truck that was in the original votes that we took of $438,000, so that we can have that overview and so that we can think about the funding of a very large capital need for the fire department over the next five years. The chief has been included in those discussions, obviously. We had a long discussion with him last night at Capital Outlay. He feels that the deferring of the truck that he had on schedule for 2014 is something that can be done, that there is not a real need from a standpoint of deterioration or breakdown. It is a 23-year-old vehicle with lots of miles on it and lots of repair that's required of it. So, we are, we're not happy about the fact that there's a vehicle out on the roads of that age. And more importantly, the deferring of that will further compress the needs for having lots of vehicles being replaced at one time. But the funding of that plan has some, we have some thoughts of that as well with the town administrator, perhaps doing a bond of several trucks over a period of time. And that would be taken into consideration in a committee deliberation. So, that's a long-winded way of saying, we have revoked our plan and would defer the fire truck of $438,000. There is a minor other adjustment of $8,000 to a police vehicle fleet replacement. So, if you look at your, and does the audience hear this?
They do not. There are a couple of extra copies on the table over there. I'd be happy to put my copy up here, and perhaps Bob can zoom in on it a little bit.
Okay. And Ray Eisenbees is very sorry that he's not here. He would like to have been here, but he's otherwise detained. And if, he likes to say, we're bottom line, and if you go to the back page, it will show the effect of those two deferrals for a total project funding for capital of $2,091,422, of which $422,500 would be funded through user fees. The light items that I refer to are in the fire, in the Police Department, the new figure for police vehicles is $119,000. And if you look at the Fire Department, you'll see in 2015, instead of 2014, the truck of So, that is our new vote and our new recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for their endorsement.
Thank you very much. And we have been over the rest of the plan in detail last time you were here, so I'll just ask my colleagues, if they have any comments or questions?
I just have a question from the town administrator. You okay with this on the revisions, or are there any other additional items you want to bring to our attention that you might think we might want to?
I think it's worthwhile maybe just spending a moment about the discussion about the fire truck.
Fine.
Because it's, you know, a fairly large proposal that I've given you. And I know I've spoken to each of you individually, but I think it's worthwhile having conversation here in front of the public. If you look at the capital plan, Tom is correct, there's a significant number of equipment. Essentially, we'll be replacing most of the frontline equipment of the Fire Department within the next three to five years. We know that both North and South Station require significant work to bring them up to grade. And I thought that it was worthwhile, just taking a pause before we proceed with what is likely going to be several million dollars of expenditures, and make sure that we have the right type of equipment, the stations are, you know, in the right locations. We've had some growth issues, and, you know, there are some issues in getting to parts of South Hingham that the fire chief has raised. And, you know, we've had discussions of a fourth fire station, and I've been frank with folks who asked me that, you know, the cost of the station is one issue, the financing or the operation of it with manpower is a whole different issue. And so, you know, before we go ahead and spend, you know, several million dollars on our buildings, we ought to make sure that they, they're in the right spots, and, like I said, that the equipment is correct. Specifically, speaking of the equipment, these types of equipment are inflating at, you know, anywhere from five to eight percent a year. So, yes, we are losing a little bit by deferring this one year, but we'd be more than picking up if we were to do a bulk purchase. I don't know how the capital plan, I mean, you've seen the capital numbers for the last, you know, I'd say the last decade, we've rarely gotten past $2 million. And, you know, the ladder truck alone, which is at the tail end of that schedule, is going to be a million-dollar purchase. There's just no way you're going to fit that into the capital plan. So, at some point in time, you'll be dealing with some type of extended financing. Our rates are really good now. We could essentially address a lot of the fire issues and mitigate the impact of the capital plan, so that they can manage the limited resources they have a little bit better in the future. And so, I'd suggest that you form some type of a committee that includes fire personnel, management, selectmen. And we have, like we did when we bought the Quint, I don't know if you remember, any of you who were around at that time, but we, we have some expertise in the community, people who work in fire services as residents, that gave us great help to select the vehicle. So, I think in that grouping, we'd be able to get to a good decision.
And I would just add, if you take a look at the Page Two of the capital plan and look out over the next four years, there's likely to be in excess of $2.5 million of requirement. Now, the chief is relatively adamant about if we're deferring this, then there has to be some funding of some major vehicles next year. If it's just the million dollars, even if it's just the million dollars that were suggested in 2015, that's something that cannot be done on operating capital. And I hope that you would think about allowing the town to go ahead and do some bonding for at least that million dollars that's going to be coming up in the Fire Department next year.
That's good. Anything else?
One question. If, for some godforsaken reason, this engine does die, which it probably won't, because they have really terrific mechanics also in the Fire Department, how would we buy the new one that we'd have to buy?
We'd be actually in that situation today, even if we planned to replace it with financing. These are not items that we go down to the local car dealership and buy.
They're not.
The lead time on these are, you know, the Quint, I believe, was over a year.
Yeah, it's a couple of years now, I think.
In lead time. So, you know, so we weren't, even, even an approval of financing at this point in time wouldn't replace it. If it, if it died on the road and we couldn't fix it, you know, we would have to find a way to appropriate the money.
But you're okay, that we would find a way?
We always seem to.
And we, last night, we pushed very hard with the, with the chief about the likely bit of that happening, and whether, if there was a break, whether it was fixable in a short period of time, and the answer was yes.
Good.
My role on the advisory committee was just as adamant. We don't want to see a $438,000 reserve fund transfer. It would break the budget. So, we pushed hard. He said it's something that he can defer for a year and not put us at risk, having to replace it interim.
I think this is great. I think you've done a nice job.
I, since I have the floor.
You have the floor.
I'd like to touch a little bit on the feasibility study. We, we kept in $60,000, which actually is within encumbrance of the $25,000 from the Fire Department for this year.
Facilities planning study.
I'm sorry. Is, would come out to $85,000. The Capital Outlay Committee is, is, is very anxious to go forward with this plan. The concept of the plan is to make sure that we have the right tools for the right planning. And the right tools means that we have to get a better sense of the total facilities around town, albeit in stages, and do the most critical ones at first, so that we at Capital Outlay can have a sense of what the real issues are from a real, realty standpoint, and what the timing is from a replacement standpoint. That would help us not only from a planning of Capital Outlay over years, but it would also help us from thinking about financing. Now, this, I would hope that the Fire Department financing would go ahead one way or the other next year, but the financing of other areas may be as critical, like the, like the physical plant of the Fire Department rather than the vehicle plant. We need to plan for that and have a knowledge base that would help with this feasibility study.
Thanks.
Any comments or questions from people in the public about the capital plan, proposed capital plan? No?
I have one. I do. The feasibility plan is a $200,000, two-year expense for looking into the future. You know, we're frugal on these things. When we did the water company, we asked for 320, but as some of you will hear on, on Sunday, we've only expended $54,000, and our effort has been to keep it low, to find some other way to get there. We may need it all at the end of the day, but I guess my question is, is there a way, maybe we could put the money in, but manage it? And what, the reason I raise this is, we had a study by a very well-known engineering company that cost us $75,000, and we didn't use it. So, I don't, I want to have an actionable plan. So, I'm asking the town administrator if he has a way to manage this 60,000 if we decide to vote for it.
Can I answer that to start with? And then, since I'm the one that?
I'm asking the town administrator.
Fine.
Well, one of the goals of the Board of Selectmen is facility planning. And, you know, you all asked me about that before you developed your goals, and I told you that facility planning is critical. You know, we have well over $100 million of physical plant asset in the town, and we need to manage it. And I hear from the Capital Outlay Committee and members of the Board of Selectmen that they want to see more formalized facilities planning. We can do this a lot of different ways. You could certainly give me a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, and I could hire an engineering firm, and they would give me a document, like four times as thick as this, and would tell me everything is wrong with the buildings, what the status of the buildings are, and what maintenance plans are on the building. We don't have a quarter of a million dollars. We could do it piece by piece. What I think I'm going to propose to you is that internally, our staff begin that process. We think we can do that in relatively short order, and see where the folks that are the custodians of the buildings right now feel, what are the conditions of the buildings, what needs to be done for preventive maintenance on an ongoing basis. But I suspect that our expertise and our personnel, I think, are professional enough to identify what they know and what they don't know. And as we bump up into areas where our expertise, we all know Roger Fernandez has a lot of skills, and, you know, has saved us millions of dollars on our projects, but Roger will acknowledge that there's certain aspects of these things that he needs extra help on. And I would, similar to the water acquisition committee, I would recommend that we use that 60,000 to fill those gaps in. Now, if it turns out that the document that we produce internally is just not acceptable to the board, then, you know, I think we'll have to go out and hire someone to do it all. But I do think that we internally could do a lot of this work and fill in the gaps.
Thank you.
Let me add to that. Bruce, you're absolutely right. The reason we've broken this up into two pieces, the first being 60,000 plus the 25 from the fire stations, is so that we can use a baseline that we already have and the expertise in-house. But we do want to reach out to the professional engineers, the HVAC experts, the double-ees who will look at the infrastructure in the building. I think we do want, in fact, I know we want, the experts to come in and give us the value added. The plan is not to put it on the shelf, and I beg to differ with you about Gale was put on the shelf. That's one of the most valuable documents around. And those of us that have copies, because I had to make a copy now, because I lent mine to somebody with a red tie down the row here. It is, everybody goes back to that document. The plan is to get the baseline for the buildings. We have, for instance, we have a 25-year replacement plan for fire equipment. We have nothing for the most expensive assets of our buildings. The plan is to create the baseline, then internally, every year, keep that baseline updated, hand it off to the decision-makers, Capital Outlay, and the facilities people in the schools, and work from there. But the intent is to keep it updated and do a forward-looking.
I don't disagree with the approach. My, this board, the previous board, had a discussion about a long-term master plan, which we haven't updated. And I don't know how you build a facility plan if you don't know where our departments and everything else are headed. So, I just want to put that caution out there. I applaud the effort to get the 60,000, but you better know where you're headed before you start spending money on bricks.
But you're not going to do that. You have to know, I know this building is going to be looked at for whatever purpose, but you should know the state of the building before you decide to do something with it.
Well, you used the expression of facilities plan.
Correct.
I'm challenging the words. What you're assessing, you're doing a facility study of our current conditions, and I'm just raising the issue for consideration that before we spend the money, we know where we're headed. And that's been an issue that we've talked about before. I think this building is fine, but we know there are, there are services in this building that we may not want here, and that hasn't been addressed yet. And I don't want to mussy up the water. I think we need some money to start to look at this, and I'm just cautioning whatever group we decide to work on this to think about the long-term plan for the town.
I don't disagree.
You know, I think that at some point, the notion, there's not a really good description of what this, what this study will encompass yet. And so, I feel confident that that discussion is going to come back before this board for discussion, because these funds will be in the selectmen's purview to assign.
Right.
So, I think, hammering out the details is going to come back to this board, and we can, unless there's a problem, we could probably move ahead with the vote.
The document that I handed out the last time we were together is the framework that Roger and I came up with, that we passed on to Capital.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm sure when the time comes to spend money or come up with a plan, the town administrator will present you with a plan.
I am sure he will.
Okay. I would entertain, oh, yes, sir. Please come on up and identify yourself.
Phil McIntyre, Road Circle, president of the Firefighters Union. I'm sorry I came in late. My daughter was taken to the hospital today for a back injury, but everything is well. I missed some of the beginning of the meeting. No disrespect to anybody on the board or anybody in Capital Outlay, but the fire stations, unlike the library, the schools, the town hall, the fire stations we live in 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, they were built 80-plus years ago. I don't know if any of you have ever woken up at 3:00 in the morning to find the temperature at 40 degrees because the heating system in the building had shut down sometime during the night, and you get up to go on a call, and it's pretty damn cold, and you have to stay there because the station has to be manned. There are other things that have been passed over on the Fire Department for years. We've been sometimes asked to take a step aside. Our people have done extraordinary work inside those stations. If any of you haven't come in to ever see them, I suggest that sometime when you get a chance, you stop by one of the firehouses and come inside, take a look, because what's done in there is done by the personnel that work there, sometimes at, you know, at the expense of just somebody's labor and time to make the things right. And we're unique. The fire stations in Hingham are very unique. They're, they have that old firehouse lore. They've been around for a long time. There are situations in some of the stations, electrical, I mean, if we go out to do inspections on some places and we walked in and found some of the things that we have in our fire stations, there'd be some issues going on. But we've been able to live with it and make do. But when you start talking about feasibilities and looking at things, just from a perspective of my own, is, over the years, we've had studies done on a lot of things. And we've had people come in, for instance, the central fire station when it was done over, there was no, there was never a request for input from the personnel that live in that fire station, other than the fire chief and the deputy chief. And no disrespect to them, they, they, they do a good job for what they do, what they're doing, but they don't live in the firehouses. They, they work a regular nine-to-five or eight-to-four shift, and they go home. If it gets cold in their office, they can always move on to something else. We don't have that choice at the outlying firehouses. So, I think that the emphasis needs to be put on where we are with the firehouses. And again, no disrespect to anybody on any of the other boards or any of the other departments. I understand that the buildings in a lot of other departments are in just, just as bad or worse, you know, repair, but they're not lived in by the personnel that work there. We actually live in the firehouses, and we have to live with whatever we're stuck. And sometimes it's, it's difficult. You don't see us up here complaining. If there's going to be a committee, as I heard as I came in, I would like to volunteer my services for that committee as president of the Firefighters Union and a 27-year member of the Fire Department.
And fourth generation.
So, with that, I just wanted to make sure that point was stable.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
And you are, all three firehouses are in the first wave of?
Yep. In my humble opinion, this is next. This is, this is where we're going next, for sure. Okay, anybody else? Comments? Questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to recommend the fiscal year 2014 Capital Outlay budget in the amount of $2,091,422.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and please thank the whole committee for your hard work. I know it has been a crazy week, and we really appreciate your flexibility and your willingness to work with us. So, next on the agenda, we'll move to a discussion of the school budget and a vote on the school budget. So, I will just now turn, sorry to be running late, but turn the meeting over to the head of the School Committee, Carol Falvey, Superintendent Dot Gallo, to fill us in on the latest.
Good evening, everybody. Carol Falvey, this is Dr. Gallo, and I'm going to turn it immediately over to her.
Good work, Carol.
Thank you. I think that you do have two documents in your, in your packet. One is a document that says Hingham Public Schools, February 25th. It's a copy of the presentation that we did and reflects the vote of the School Committee last Monday evening. And there is one correction on it that I'll make as I go through a very brief slide presentation. You also have two documents that summarize both the School Committee's recommendation and the AdCom Subcommittee. I just want to make a point that there are a couple of corrections on those. But let's go through the slide presentation first.
We can see it there, because I can't see it here.
Yes. Yes, the, one of the things on the paper, we.
Oh, God, don't you?
I know.
We have to pay attention up there.
Want it back on?
No.
No, I don't. I'm good here.
I think it's better for everybody if it's off.
Sure. This is very brief, because, of course, we gave our longer presentation at the joint meeting. So, I'm very, going to very quickly go through what changes have occurred since then and come to the bottom line, which is the vote that the School Committee took on Monday, Monday night. So, this is the thing that you can't read.
Probably, Bruce, because it's small and faint.
But this is the actual budget broken into three categories. The regular education budget, which is the one in blue here. And I would just comment on the columns that are there. To the far left is the actual account number. Each of our categories has an account number, and then what the title of that section is. The budget for FY '13, the year that we're in, the budget that was originally proposed back in December for the year that we're projecting, '13, '14. Adjustments that we've made over the time since December, and they're there in category. So, in the regular education budget, that is a total of $422,502, excuse me, $802. The adjusted budget as of Monday night, and that is a total there of $31,445,378. And then the increase or decrease by the individual function. So, that is a percentage increase for the regular education piece of 5.09%. We move on to the special ed piece, which is in green, same categories there from the time in December that when we first presented. We've reduced that budget by $154,760. That brings that budget to a total of $10,410,115, and that is actually a decrease over FY ' '13. And it's a decrease of 0.84%. The red indicates the vocational budget, same categories. We have, had no change in that particular budget from the time that we originally presented materials in December. The size of that budget is $138,292. Represents only six, six children who will go to vocational school. It's an increase, because this year we have seven children, and so that budget is a decrease of 4.96%. So, the summary of all the budgets is at the very bottom, and it's in the black. And the original budget that we proposed in December was $42,571,346. Since December, we've made adjustments, and the net decrease in that budget is $5,775,62. Most of the adjustments that we have made are negative. We've taken the budget down for a variety of reasons, mainly in the personnel area, changes in personnel such as retirements, resignations, people returning or not from leaves of absences. There are a couple of places where we increased, but the net change in the budget is a decrease of $5,775,62. So, the adjusted total budget that was proposed to the School Committee was $41,993,784, and that's an increase of 3.52% from FY '13. The rest of the slide, you'll be happy to know, have bigger print on them. Moving forward, this was the original budget. Just a summary again, you can see the increase from FY '13. Combined was 4.93 originally. The regular education piece was 6.49. The special education- The special education was up slightly. Now it's below last year's, or the year that we're in. And vocational is a decrease and has remained that. So in December, 4.93% increase. And you'll see in a minute that the budget that was voted by the school committee is a 3.52% overall. We made changes at virtually each one of the budget hearings that we've had. I'm not going to go through all of them, but on February 11th, when we had the public hearing, the overall budget was down to 3.94% from the current year. And you can see that the vocational education at the bottom did not change. The special ed had now gone below this year's level, and the regular education had decreased to 5.66. Now, you know that we presented our requests in four categories at the time of the meeting, the joint meeting, and from the very beginning. And the four categories had to do with needs. This was a needs-based budget, and we had needs that were enrollment-related. We had needs that were related to losses in the past and needs to restore certain things that we've lost over the years. We had needs that were very unique, unusual situations, other than an enrollment need. That was, and the third category was a category that was a list of things that we think would and know would enhance our program. So those were four categories. We had been asked to separate this budget into two categories, because that's essentially what the other departments are asked to do. And the two categories would be things that we would call level services initiatives, and that would include some consideration for increased enrollment, need-based, needs based on enrollment. And then the other category would be the other things that we had requested. So on Monday night, for the first time, we presented two slides. Well, actually, four slides, two for each category. And I'm not going to go through them all, because at the joint meeting, I explained what all of these things were. But the level services initiatives are on this first slide. They include the classroom teachers, a special ed teacher, additional bus that we need because of growing enrollment, a couple of coaches that have to do with the enrollment in those sports, continuing the level services, clerical support for our office, increase in health aid hours at the high school. The high school is growing, big sprawling building, we needed five more hours a week there. Restoring the math director to full-time, and actually, the math director that we have this year works at full-time. But because he's a retired individual and because he works well more hours than we pay him for, we had been paying him at a 40% rate. He will not be continuing in that role, and therefore, we need to restore the dollars for the position that we have to provide the level services. Increasing the language lab hours by five a week, and again, that's related to enrollment. More youngsters at the high school, need more sections in foreign language, and therefore, more opportunity for every class to get into the lab as part of a regular cycle. And then general equipment copier issues and so on that go with enrollment. And typically, we haven't put things like that in the level services budget. We really only put in personnel. But the reality is that needs exist in other areas. So by our assessment, the four slides, when changed to two, mean that the total level services new initiatives amounted to 488,820. If we look at the other category, which all represent needs, because you'll remember that we emphasized repeatedly that we were presenting a needs-based budget this year, and that it was a starting point for discussion and decision-making and not the, the end product. But these are the other things that are, are equally important needs, but that I couldn't justify fitting into a definition of level services. One is the middle school librarian to raise that position to full-time. 972 youngsters in that building, we need a full-time librarian, brand-new library coming, and so on. You've heard also about middle school technology specialists. All of our other schools have resident technology specialists, the middle school has none, except for the three administrators who do a yeoman's job, but it's beyond their, their scope in terms of their time and their expertise. The two elementary assistant principals, that's something that we badly need, that would be a restoration item, but I couldn't fit that under level services. A custodial supervisory maintenance support person, 65,000. Some additional summer help for cleaning and maintenance. These are college helper students who are a good bang for the buck in terms of the dollar rate that they get. And then hours for post-secondary planning center for the high school. Transition room tutor, this is a net, brand-new program that is operating this year, and is funded by Hingham Ed Foundation grant. It's not there as, I could, felt I could not justify putting it in to the level services budget. I can justify, it's a very high priority need to continue that, but it didn't fit the definition. And I'm pretty rigid about definitions. You've heard that we had a Title IX study done, we need some clerical report for the periodic clerical funding, for the periodic reports that are going to be required on an ongoing basis to meet our Title IX obligations. And you know that relates to equity, providing equal access for both genders. And then dance team coaches, that's another thing, that's a result of the Title IX request. We think that dance is a very popular activity now. We need to move it into the sports category, because that will help us with the gender balance. Global citizenship program, again, functioning this year, partially funded by Hingham Ed Foundation, mainly funded, but also with a lot of volunteerism and initiative of staff. Freshman advisory program, something we've needed for a long, long time. And, and another category of equipment and maintenance and so on. So the total of all the other needs that we couldn't put into level services needs, but very important to us and high priority, 432,297. So breaking this into those two categories was something that, that occurred on Monday and was presented to the school committee for the first time on Monday evening and to the audience that was there. So where we are right now, and this goes back to the initial slides, but it is in bigger print, is that the combined budget that we presented to the school committee for their action, and that they voted to approve, was a combined budget of 41,993,784, up 3.52% from FY '13. And then if you break that into the two categories, total level services budget, 41,561,487, and that's up 2.45% from the current year. And the other needs and initiatives that I just went through, total of 432,297, that's up 1.07%, 2.45%, and the 1.07 are the 3.52. And so at the bottom, again, is the total proposed budget. That is the budget. This, I did this presentation on Monday night, it was proposed at that point, it was voted at that meeting.
Thank you. So, questions or comments on this?
Sure. Thank you. And thank both Carol and Ray for continuing, as you promised, to put efforts on the reduced amount. And I very much appreciate that. Thank you. I can see where everybody is now. That's good.
There are a couple of seats over in this corner. People are looking for chairs. There are some over here.
I would like to, at, at the meeting in February, we, I had made a request, and Carol and Mr. Ferris provided me with a document that I thought I'd like to share with the population at large, because we know all the statistics, but sometimes the real benefit is the stories that associate with where do our students go and how well do we do? And we have consistently, according to the numbers you provided me, been performing in the upper 80%, close to 90% of four-year college application and success rate, which I consider extremely important, because to many people who want to move here, that's an indication of their, of their desire and why education is so important to us. But I also took the liberty of going through the details of where did we apply to? And, you know, the documents that were presented to me described the categories of colleges in most competitive, very competitive, et cetera. And I looked at a few, and one I happened to know about, because I was on their admissions board. And that was Georgetown. And the Georgetown numbers were five students applied and one was accepted. That is the average for Georgetown, one out of five. I can tell you, there are many high schools in the United States of the, over 3,000, that don't get any representation. So that's good. I was very pleased to see the Boston College and Holy Cross. Don't read any religious persuasion into this, but those acceptance rates were, were extremely well and reflective of what the experience I had when geography plays an advantage. And by the way, for anybody who wants to know, Georgetown accepts one student from Fargo Central High School in North Dakota. So if you want to move to North Dakota, there's a good possibility you can get in there. Some of the other schools were very interesting as well. I thought Harvard, and my colleague to my left here is representative of that. I'm not editorializing here, so. But there too, we had representation, and that's another example of, of how well we did. So this information, rather voluminous, but if you take the time to go through it, I think it's reflective of the quality side, which we don't often talk about. We, that we leave up to you folks. So I just wanted to take that time to, to share that information that you had given to the folks at large. Dot, you told us there were 40 more students, if I recall, 40-plus in your estimates for next year?
Yes.
Forty, forty-plus?
Forty at the secondary level. Well, more than that secondary level, but projected slight decrease at the elementary, and so...
And that's why the increase in secondary education teachers is in the request here.
Well, I think it's a combination of things. It's that there, it has been an imbalance in terms of funding and resources between the elementary and secondary. And so the, the secondary number is a more cumulative number than the elementary. The elementary, we look year by year. The secondary level, for example, if you have an increase of 100 students, you need to have a core subject teacher in every, as a rule of thumb, in every subject. And you need a couple of elective teachers as well for every 100 kids. So that we tend to bump that up in steps at the secondary level, as opposed to at the elementary. We tend to think, how many more classes do we need next year from this year? So the process is a little bit different, and that's why the number is bigger. But in terms of the other kinds of personnel that are in here, every elementary school has a full-time librarian. Our middle school has a half-time one. Not by any design, but because when we had to cut a number of years ago, we took advantage of attrition, because we didn't want to incur unemployment costs. So there are some things like that that we have better balance. Each of the elementary schools, for example, has full-time staffing where the high school does not. Technology specialist was the one, was the one area, but there are a number of other areas as well. And, and, you know, if you look at even the administrators, at the secondary level, we have six building administrators, two buildings, and that's for seven grades. At the elementary level, we currently have six administrators, four principals and two assistants, and that's for six grades. And so some of the personnel in here, as well as being in there for a particular need, also help with creating more equity across the levels.
Okay. Would it be, would it be fair, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, would it be fair to say that the other needs and additives number, the 432, is that to get us back to, I think what you, we called it, to replace some of the things we lost during the, the financial downturn?
Some of those things are, this is that list, the middle school librarian certainly is one of those areas, the technology specialist is another. We laid off the one specialist that we had at that time, and again, it was dealing with attrition where we could find it. The elementary assistant principals, we lost those when we opened the middle school, and the override didn't, didn't cover the addition to have one in each school. So in general, those, those three big things, definitely a restoration.
Okay. Good. Okay, thank you.
Hard to follow that one. Thank you for the information on the colleges. I found that very, very enlightening. What I also was happy to see was not only are kids going to the top schools, very large schools, the breadth and depth of the different kinds of colleges these kids are going to.
And even geographically has expanded.
Absolutely. Well, I was glad to see the University of Florida on there as a very highly competitive school. Not that I want to say anything, but Jeff is laughing. But I was very happy to see the variety of schools. Because everybody always thinks of the top 10, but you don't think of the great, small schools, that some kids are just not suited for large schools. I thought that document, and thank you for taking a lot of time to put it together.
Heather is the person who labeled, using the Barron's listing, the schools in terms of their competitiveness. Important to point out with respect to that, that that list of Barron's has changed immensely from the time that I went to school and then the times that some of you went to school. It's a list that is growing, and it includes some schools that have improved immensely in terms of their rating over the, over the years. And I think I'm very pleased, for example, of the UMass rating there. The UMass rating is a very good rating, and given that many of our students go there, and given that financially, it's a good alternative for some students, I think that, that's a fantastic thing. And I didn't know that until I looked at the newest list. I, I would like to correct the other sheets that you have, just if you can fill in the numbers. Bottom line does not change at all, but if you look at the sheet that is FY '14 school budget, school committee recommendation, in the dollar column, the number should be
Jeez. Okay.
Is she a math teacher?
And the number below that...
You were a math teacher, right, Dot?
Well, this was a copying error, not, not really a math error. The number below that, however, was a copying error, and that number should be 432,297. But the bottom line is there and is correct. And on the other side, which is the subcommittee recommendation, there still is that 41,561, 487. But again, the bottom lines are correct.
Thank you.
The only other comments I have on the information, I did watch the school committee meeting on TV, which is why I don't have a lot of questions, which will shock everybody in the audience. Dot, I thought you did a great job going into very low-level detail, but getting through it in a time. And I applaud you also for splitting out regular ed from special ed, so that people truly understand the demands that are being put. So, nice job.
Thank you. And certainly, in the last two years, we've seen the extremes of what can happen there, and how much variability there is. Because last year, the special ed number was a very big number in terms of percent increase, and the regular ed was the low number. This year, it's the other way around, and will vary, I'm sure, over the years.
Thank you, Dr. Gallow. I, I know that the education subcommittee of the advisory committee has met and decided on what their recommendation will be to the advisory committee. We don't usually have advantage of their thinking, but they put a great deal of study into the school budget over the course of the school budget presentation period. And so I see three of the four members of the committee here, at least. So I wondered if you could, if someone, I don't know who the chair is, but if someone could share with us your recommendation. I think we have this item. Do we have that for, or should we put one of these up?
Here, I'll put one up.
We'll put one up here. Okay. Thanks.
Can I speak into this very low microphone?
Well, can we adjust the microphone? It looks as if I was... I think it's probably okay.
Hi, Laura Marwell, Chair of the Advisory Education Subcommittee. And I'd like to thank Dr. Gallow and Carol and all the school committee and the school administration for the effort that they put into this budget, because they had a very challenging schedule this year, a lot on their plate, and I know a lot of work and effort went into it. As Dr. Gallow said, when she, when they first introduced the budget this year, they introduced a needs-based budget, was a little bit of a departure from what we're used to in the past. And it is, and with the understanding that it was a, a... with the understanding that it was a, a starting point, and that we would come to a balance between needs and resources, and available resources. And we think we've done that. The slide, the second slide that you'll see where Dr. Gallo made some corrections, we had a last-minute, put our heads together and noticed a discrepancy. But as she said, the bottom line doesn't change. The Advisory Education Subcommittee is recommending a total of $41,838,228, an increase of 3.13%. That fully funds the Level Services request, which, which takes care of all the enrollment-related increases. It adds an elementary school teacher, four secondary teachers, to ease the class-size pressures, and even to restore some of the electives that had been lost over time. An additional bus and driver, some additional coaching, an additional Plymouth River Special Ed professional, to put them on a par with the other teachers, the other elementary schools, as Dr. Gallo said. Some additional staffing at the head office to help deal with the administrative requests and unfunded mandates. Funding to restore the full-time funding for the math director. Additional hours for the health aide at the high school, and additional hours for the language lab aide. And also, some general equipment, copier replacements and maintenance. In addition to that, we were able to fund of the, of the additional requests, we were able to fund the top three priorities of the school administration. We were, as Dr. Gallo said, we were able to fund the other half of the middle school librarian position, so we now have a full-time librarian at the middle school. We were able to restore the middle school technology specialist and the two elementary school assistant principals that I know Dr. Gallo has regretted ever letting go. So, we feel that there is a lot that is in this budget that was a good balance between meeting the current needs and beginning to chip away at some of the things that were lost over the last few years, some of the backlog, and we hope to be able to continue to do that as we go forward. And this was a unanimous recommendation by the Advisory Committee Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Laura, excuse me, could, that number was 41-832?
838.
838?
228. 838, 228.
The bottom line.
Okay. Thank you.
Right there. Okay. Any comments or questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
We started budgeting back in September, and for the last several years, we built our budget based on anticipated revenue. And we felt it was time to stop that and build a needs-based budget. This budget reflects the needs of the town, of the children of this town, to be educated the way their parents expect them to be educated. We've asked for 3.52%. It's not a lot to ask, based upon the cuts that we've made in the past, and Laura's right. We, it is a start. We're chipping away, but Bruce, you asked us for those colleges. You want to see where our kids are going. How can we continue to send our children to the schools that we're sending them to if we're asked to continue to provide level services? We're never going to change, we're never going to improve, and we're never going to evolve. We cannot continue to look at our budgets based on level services. It's not sufficient for the town of Hingham. So, I'm asking you to take a look at our budget, the way we budgeted, needs-based, everything in there is a need, and, and look at what we've asked for. It was a challenging year. We've been working on it since September. I'd like to take the opportunity at this point to thank the administration for re-looking at how they budget. I'd like to thank the Advisory Board for working through us, with us, on this long process, and, and ask you to take a look at the budget that we submitted to you tonight.
Well, I'd just like to reaffirm what you said, that everything in this budget is a need. And I haven't heard anyone through this whole process say otherwise. And the, and I really very much appreciated the, the needs-based budget this year. I felt, I agree with you, it was time to return to that way of looking at, at how to fund our educational priorities, if only because, for the first time, we suspected we might be able to meet some of the, the needs beyond level services for the first time in a number of years. And that was kind of a nice feeling of increasing space and a little room to move. And so, being able to return to looking at it as a needs-based problem to solve, I found, I, I think that's a great, great improvement over what we've had to do over the, over the last few years. And so, I appreciated that, and I felt like it really helped us all reset in terms of moving a little bit away from the scarcity mentality and being able to imagine restoring some of these things that we lost. And also, I mean, it's been five years, and, and directions have changed and needs have changed as well. Not everything that we would've said we would've wanted five years ago is exactly the same as what we would have this year. So, I do, I just want to reaffirm that I think the needs-based approach is a really great one for budgeting, because it tells us what's really happening. And I appreciate the hard work that you put in to, it was amazing how the number kept coming down. That was, that was quite, quite, quite an effort, and so, I appreciate the hard work that you've been doing. Comments?
I have a question. Ditto everything, I won't repeat it. Will the school committee and the advisory committee continue, regardless of what we vote tonight, will you all continue to talk? Because the budget that goes to town meeting is the advisory committee budget.
We listen. I see. Laura and I have talked twice in the last two days.
Excellent.
But one of the things we talked about wasn't so much about the numbers, because the numbers are the numbers, and we disagree on those. We're, of course, disappointed that we, that there was what it was, but we do understand the reasoning. But what we talked about was getting together at a time that we're not in the emotion of the budget approval and the, you know, the quick things that happen at this time of year, but talking about, thinking about budgets in a different way. And as you pointed out, thinking about them more from needs, and is there a way we can just get away from that term, level services, to something else that suggests that we don't want to simply continue to do in any department what we've been doing. So, can we come up with some other ways of thinking about how we budget? And obviously, I can only speak for the school department, but, so yes, we, we agree that we need to get together in some other forums and, and think more broadly than just about this budget.
I'm also happy you're going to a needs-based budget, and I hope some of our other departments, especially the first responders, will be able to move towards that as our revenue picture improves.
And it isn't, you know, I said, from day one, it's the beginning of the conversation. Whether we start based on revenue and then add needs, or we start with needs and then make reductions, we have to come to a balance between the resources that are available and the needs, but we are looking at going at it in a different way.
Let me just encourage you, in, in that discussion between advisory and the school committee, to involve the town administrator and, and just, let's just have some blue-sky thinking. Now that, now that we have a little more room to move, a little breathing room, it's a good moment to think about the budgeting process and see if there's a new, a new way of envisioning what we need. And there may be things that, it could be that different departments are different, I don't know, or they could be the same. I don't know. You guys sit down and talk and find out, and let us know what you think, but I think that's a very exciting discussion to be, to be beginning.
Mr. Town Administrator, where, does which budget fit in what bucket in terms of the balanced approach that you told us you were trying to seek?
I think I'm going to have to ask you to clarify your question a little bit more.
Well, which, I mean, does it matter which one we vote for on the?
Do you have that?
The town administrator will make it work. I know.
Okay. So, you all have a copy of the five-year forecast in, in your package?
Yes.
Sue Nickerson, our town accountant, has updated it. As you know, we had a forecast meeting on, on Monday, which brought us to a balanced budget, and this budget reflects that. The number included in this budget is the budget as recommended by the Education Subcommittee.
Okay.
The Advisory Committee.
That's.
And you could see that the budget, which includes the capital that you discussed earlier, represents a balance to the good of $16,920.
Does this include dropping the engine out?
Yes.
So, it's really up to date. As up to date as you can get. Okay. Unless there's any comments or questions from anybody in the public about the school budget before we begin? So, I would, would anybody like to propose a budget number?
I do. I'd like to propose that we approve a budget of $41,838,228 for fiscal year 2014-13-14, sorry.
That's the advisory budget.
That is the advisory Subcommittee budget. Is there a second? I will second that motion. I, I'm recommending, I am recommending the Advisory Committee's Subcommittee Recommendation as, as the Subcommittee does. I've, it's, it is a, it's somewhat smaller than the, than the request of the school committee. I'm very sensitive to that. I appreciate that, I appreciate that everything on the school committee's budget is a need. We do have some, some more room to move this year than we have had, but I think in terms of on the, on the town side, the only people who, only departments who've been able to get everything they wanted were those who only requested level services. We've been able to meet level services for everyone. And in many cases, we've been able to take some steps down the road of restoring, restoring some of the things that have been lost, including, as they point out, the administration's top three priorities in the case of the school department. And I know that we're going to, we're going to continue down this road. I'm sorry, I don't feel like we can quite get there this year, but we're, I very much appreciate having those needs drawn to my attention. And I look forward to meeting more of them next year.
Before we vote, can I just ask that you all continue talking, that if money becomes available, which as it does at the very last minute, as we know, that the conversation continue, and that you move towards the number that the school committee, then I'm comfortable making this unanimous.
Love it when new money appears.
I know. Just worry.
Figuring out what to do with it is a very pleasant problem to have.
Yes.
Laura, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
The governor's budget has, in the budget, $25 per student. If the governor's bu- budget passes, I would like to request that that money, which is roughly a $100,000, be directed to our budget. It would come back to us in the form of Chapter 78, correct?
But that already goes.
Correct.
That doesn't go to the general fund, right?
The, the governor's budget actually includes a half a million dollar increase, Chapter 78 for the town. Of course, it's also tied to a $1.9 billion tax increase that the legislature is taking up as we speak. There is not a manager on the South Shore, I believe, that is increasing over, over level funding state aid at this point in time, which said more plainly is, you know, we just can't commit to whether or not that funds are coming in. Chairman Falvey does point out that included in that half a million is a $25 per pupil number that the governor had hoped to give to all cities and towns. Again, it's tied to the tax increase. Is there some part of the tax increase that gets approved, or none? There, there is a possibility that that could fall through to the bottom line, and there could be that $100,000 available. That's general aid. Chapter 78 is considered general aid, and you're free to do with it as you see fit. It's not a direct allocation to the schools.
I see.
So, if we don't get the whole amount, maybe a percent of that, we could think about?
Well, I, I think we can certainly commit ourselves to exploring that based on whatever comes through. This is certainly not the end of the discussion. I think we're all aware of that. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for all your hard work, and.
Thank you.
We'll do it all again next year.
Maybe in another month or so when we get the numbers.
Yes. Okay. The next item on our agenda, and I am sorry to be running so late, but as you can see, these were weighty matters that we were considering, so I'm glad that we have been able to get to it actually so soon. We will be welcoming the School Fields Committee. I'm not sure who the chair of the School Fields Committee is.
He's right here next to me.
Oh, hello. Hi. Thank you for joining us. And we will be hearing about the School Fields Project, and while there have been 25 public hearings for people to come and discuss things, this is actually our first time down the road. So, that's why we're going to have a fairly complete description of where the project stands right now. And following that, we will consider the proposed, the four proposed warrant articles relating to the School Fields Project. So, I will turn it over to you, Chairman Falvey, and Chairman.
Tim, Tim Schoyer.
Tim Schoyer.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
I don't know why that little thing is up there on the screen, but we'll just ignore it.
That's the bottom of the red thing, right? Oh, the little.
In the upper.
Yeah, the container searching icon.
No idea. Okay.
It's on your board.
Should click and go. So, I'd like to thank you for entertaining us tonight and listening to our story. We're going to talk about the timeline, the Ad-Hoc Field Committee, which Tim chaired for us, the field components and the associated costs, and then the usage policy. This project started back in 2005, so there's a lot of thought that has gone into this project. A lot of people involved, a lot of generations actually involved. Back in 2006, an ad hoc committee was formed to prepare recommendations, and, and this was based upon the conditions of the bleachers, as well as drainage issues at the fields. That committee generated 13 possible field options, and they narrowed those down to five. And we requested, school committee requested at that time, a $30,000 expenditure replaced into capital budget for the bleachers study. Back in 2007, the town meeting approved a $30,000 bleacher study. For 2008, 2007 was also the year we received the SOI for the elementary school. We did nothing with the bleachers, so they were not ADA compliant and broken back then, and they still are now. In 2008, the Bleacher Replacement and Field Project placed, we placed it into the fiscal year capital budget of 2010. It was in the capital budget again for 2011, so you, you can see, it's been on our plates for many years, many years. In 2010, we hired Margaret Conady. And Margaret, I have to say, changed our lives. She came to us as the new AD, thrilled to be working in her hometown, and said to us, "Well, I was so proud to come to Hingham, but I'm ashamed of the conditions of the fields, and it's not even the fields anymore, the tack, the track and the tennis courts are unplayable and unsafe." So, what had originally been our, our initial concern was drainage and bleachers immediately shifted to unsafe conditions that we had at, at the track and the tennis courts. We, long-range planning of school committee began an assessment of the track and tennis courts and the fields. We requested funds for, in capital that year, and we established a private-public partnership for track design, and Hingham Sports Partnership, as well as Track Boosters, participated in that private-public partnership so we could get the track design started. In 2011, we had the special town meeting, which approved, as part of the capital budget, the, the design of the capital, of the, the track. We formed the Ad-Hoc Field Committee that year, and then in, in fall of 2011, we had the special town meeting, which approved the reconstruction of the track and the development of the tennis courts, or the, well, we just fixed the tennis courts. I feel that I need to warn everybody, they will need to be looked at again at some point. And at that town meeting, 87% voted in favor of funding Phase One, and now we're moving on to Phase Two. The Ad-Hoc Committee was established in 2011. It consists of two high school neighbors, three other residents, two parents of student athletes, and Ed Schreier, who's a member of school committee. Roger Fernandez also participated in all the meetings, as well as Margaret Conady, our AD. John Ferris, Dot was frequently there, many of us attended. And I'm going to let Tim take it over from here. Tim Schoyer acted as our chair, and, and for 18 months, held a lot of meetings.
Thank you, and thanks, thanks for having us here today. Each person on the, on the committee worked very hard, had great participation in terms of attendance at all the meetings. I think everybody had their own reasons for, for volunteering or for applying for the, for the, for the position. Mine is simply that I truly believe that sports and other extracurricular activities, whether they're music or what have you, are just integral to the kids and, you know, the kids' learning. And I'd love to take that list of. And I'd love to take that list of colleges that were handed out, and I'd love to be able to put an asterisk next to all the colleges there where Hingham, you know, kids have gone and, and, and played sports, because I think it's, I think it's very impressive. So that's, that's, that's a little bit of the background there. So what was our charge? And this is directly out of the, the warrant article. So continue the work of the two thousand and six committee to work with administration, coaches, long-range planning, to help implement phase one. I'll be completely honest with you, our committee did very little on phase one. It was already, once it was approved, it had already been done. The school officials and the town officials had already had it all lined up, and they executed beautifully, again, a on-time, under-budget for, for both of those projects. So that was, that was great there. We would also take community input. As you'll hear, every single meeting, we, we took, we, we took input, absolutely every, every single meeting, and a lot of it was, we had consistent themes, and we, and we will talk about the parking situation is, is one of those, I think, consistent themes that everybody took very seriously. We had experts in lighting, turf, parking study, we had done traffic, parking and traffic. We also had Chief Perino come, not only provide his input on what he'd like to see in the project, but also come to a, one of our largest meetings that we had, probably seventy-five or more, or more people attend, and actually answer questions from the neighbors, you know, the sort of the push-pull between, is it overcrowded, or is it enforcement and things like that? So all that input was taken and turned out to be, I thought, I thought extremely valuable input. We took, we had three votes. The first vote was on placement of fields, placement of fields and what would constitute what our suggestion would be. Again, our charge was to make a recommendation to the, to the school board. But where the field should be, what the project should entail, and, you know, what amenities that we would, we would suggest that they do. To get to that point, what we did was we went back and again, we continued on the two thousand and six committee, and we actually had two members on our committee that actually were part, well, in the group that was part of the, that were part of the two thousand and six committee. Margaret Conady, who's, you know, as we know, the athletic director's probably, hopefully watching some basketball right now. She, if she pings me, I'll tell you what the score is. The Hingham High School boys are playing in a playoff game, which, no offense, I would love to be at.
So would Wade.
Yeah, can we turn the channel?
Tim, so would Wade.
Tim, thanks for the presentation.
Yeah.
We're done.
Good to go.
Exactly. So in order to come up with a recommendation, we, we sort of wound back, and we said, okay, what's, what's changed since the two thousand and six committee? Clearly, the first two pieces, right? The tennis court you couldn't even use, the track was in a position where it was probably a year or two away from not being able to use. So that was done. You know, what was, when I say no change, what were the issues that were still issues when we went through, and they were very clearly, very much the same, oh, actually, I'm sorry, one additional change factor was, and rightfully so, the real push to get the, the girls access to the same type of sporting, you know, experience that the boys have, so the title, you know, what we call Title IX. So that, although it was around in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, clearly came much more to the, to the forefront, and rightfully so. The other things that were always been a problem, and probably were a little bit worse, but still just the, sort of the same, has been the drainage, which has been an issue, therefore, safety, I think, on the, on the fields, on level fields, and, and what have you there. And then the, you know, the, the famous fifty-eight-year-old, or however you have, fifty-eight-year-old bleachers. I don't know in nineteen fifty-five what the, what the top songs were on billboard, but, you know, I'm sure somebody in this town had their first kiss on those bleachers in nineteen fifty-five, and it's clearly, they owe us no money. You know, they owe us, those bleachers owe us nothing. And then I think what the new piece was, is, and I alluded to it before, as we had our meetings, I thought I was on Parking Wars. The first five or six meetings, it was just one after another. If you guys don't address parking, whether it's sports, or town, or school events, this plan is not, you know, it's not a realistic plan. And it wasn't a handful of people, it was probably, you know, some days it was a dozen, two dozen, you know, people consistently showing up. And then with Chief Perino, you know, joining in there, I initially was like, wow, you know, we could really use that money for the, you know, for the sporting, you know, the amenities. But at the end of the day, realized, you know, this is a, we need to fix that issue to make the total neighborhood experience, including sporting, experience. I think the committee probably, we didn't spend as much time in cost because Gail was doing the cost sort of towards the end of our, towards the end of our process and, you know, going through the various committees within town. I think some of the committee members would be surprised to find six or seven hundred thousand dollars to add an extra, you know, what seemed like at the beginning to add an extra hundred or a hundred and twenty, you know, parking, you know, parking spaces and things like that. But I think everyone felt that that was, that was something that we should support and we should move forward, even though, at the end of the day, may or may not really be, be associated, and actually, our parking study advised that you should handle the high-volume sporting events with, you know, special, you know, with, with special parking for those, you know, for those days, special event parking, which I know Carol, Carol will get to. The next page, the field design process. So when Gail was, when Gail was hired, we sat down and came up with these seven design alternatives here, and, and what would make a good project. A butter impacts, environmental impacts, cost, impacts on other fields, we're at a shortage of fields, we just desperately could not lose a field, and we need to actually to make, somehow come up with an extra field. Location of restrooms and concessions, traffic and parking impact, and safety of operations. We asked Gail not only to look at the parcel, not only to look at what the two thousand and six committee did, which was mainly on this, on this side, or completely on this side of the, of Union Street, but asked them to actually analyze the entire parcel, so both, you know, both, both sides, because we wanted to make sure that we left no stone unturned, and if there was some better alternative, that we, that we would, that we would pursue that. At the end of the day, we narrowed down numerous options down to two primary, two primary options. The first one here being the one that ultimately was, was accepted, was a multipurpose field right next to, just adjacent to the, to the existing track that's been, that's been redone. And then relocation of the softball field from the corner of the parking lot near, near the school, over to the other side of Union Street, and down in the parking area, adding an additional multiple numbers of, of parking spots. That plus completely, you know, regrading, fixing the drainage, so we won't have what Margaret, I guess, called it last town meeting, you know, the, the sunny day rain out, which is the, the rain out the day after it rains. So all of those things were, were, were looked at. So that was, that was, that was the first alternative. The second alternative, which got a lot of consideration, and we looked at and we talked about for, for a very long time, was rather than put the multipurpose field immediately adjacent to the, the track, we would actually allow, we would actually use that field that's there right now as just another field, sort of the way it's been used, the way it's been used now for practice and, and what have you, and then move the multipurpose field down directly just behind where the, where the parking lot is. We'll talk about how we went through and, and how Gail helped us analyze the, the two plans there on the next page. So like all things in life, green is better than red, yellow is in between, is in between green and red. So the columns, the first set of columns, the one that starts with the red up top, is, is the first field that we talked about, which was the field adjacent to, directly adjacent to the, to the track, and the one to the right was the, the field that was closer to the south parking lot, I guess, yeah, the, the southern parking lot. And I know it's difficult to read, but what I would say is that there was a couple things. So the top one, I'll just, I'll, I'll summarize it for you very quickly. So the top one was the butter impacts. So moving the field down towards the parking lot was slightly better for, certainly better for Downing, Downing Street residents, and, and probably in general, just sort of moved it more into the, the central, the central location. On the one next to the track, although it didn't move it into the center, it did, you know, we did acknowledge the fact that we moved it a full, you know, football field away, because, you know, rather than being where it is on the football field, it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's a full, it's a full field in, inside of that. Environmental impacts and ease of permitting. We gave them both greens, and I don't know if Carol can, Carol or, or, or Bill Seymour can, can chime in. I think at the end of the day, based on some of our other permitting conversations with conservation committee and things like that, it actually turned out that the field closer to the existing track and football field was, was an easier, would have been, is a much easier place to, to get it permitted, and the fact that, that field, if it was down in that southern parking lot, was much closer to some of the thirty-year flood zones and things like that.
Yeah, I would, I would color that one yellow now, right?
Okay, yeah.
Wouldn't you, Bill? I mean Yeah, it is. Hindsight's a wonderful thing.
Site development cost was, was, was gen, was generally a, was generally a push. The impact on other fields, I guess we came out with, in the first, in the first column, green, if you, if you were to use synthetic turf, effectively you could get a, add a field out of it, because you could run practices from three to five, and then you could, or, and then have five to seven, or, you know, what have you. So you could, you could have dual, you could use it twice during, during the week, and therefore, that was a, that was a positive, that, that was a positive, net positive. On the other, the other category was no net gain, because you were losing some fields down by the lacrosse area, and then you were gaining two fields, which was the field plus, plus if you use synthetic turf. So that was, that was net negative. On location of restrooms and concessions, it's much, the first one's much closer to the, to the school, and therefore was considered a, a better alternative. Impact on, impact on traffic and parking, I think again, is a key one, that we have, we have the one on the right is, is yellow, but we would have, it would have been difficult or impossible to add incremental parking, because the field would have been very close to the, to the existing parking lot down, down on the southern side. And then safety, you know, safety and, and other, again, went to the, went to the field that was closer to the, to the school. So, so we, so we took a, you know, a, a somewhat scientific, but really a, you know, a, a general pros and cons. Ultimately, you had a vote on that, and the vote was, there was one, one against and, and six, and, and six-four. So that was, that was that vote. The other two votes that we'll talk about were, ultimately were, were unanimous votes, but, you know, not with a lot, not without a lot of, of discussion. Speed it up here, I'm sorry. On the, on multipurpose fields, so this is a slide that I put together, you know, the world's about benchmarking, I know this town is about benchmarking, so, you know, why don't we benchmark, and why don't we just look to see what the, why don't we just look to see what the other towns have? So the chart simply, on the left-hand side, shows the league that Hingham competes in, the Patriot League, and then each, each of the two divisions, so Keenan and Fisher. So Hingham, Ducksbury, North Quincy, Silver Lake, Whitman, Hanson, and Keenan, Hanover, Middlebury, Pembroke, Quincy, and Situate in the Fisher division. And you can just see, so synthetic turf, seven out of ten in, in the Patriot League have it, lights, nine out of ten in the Patriot League have it. The column to the right is a little less scientific. What I, what we did, what I did was take any town that touched us, plus towns, other towns on the South Shore, and then, and this part is not scientific, other towns that I hear people comparing, comparing Hingham to, like, some of the, some of the western, some of the western suburbs and, and towns that we compete, you know, compete with on, you know, at least on youth, youth sport, and sometimes in high, and sometimes in high school as well. And then, and we had a, you know, you have a similar, you have a similar mix, you have a similar mix there. When Margaret came to one of our meetings, and we talked about sort of where does Hingham today fit within the ten schools in our, in our town, or in our, in the Patriot League, she had said she polled other ADs, and they came up with that we were ninth out of ten. So Middleborough was not a good situ, not a good situation down there with, with fields, but that we were, we were generally ninth out of tenth is where we, is where we sat. I would say to you, if the school plan, all three warrant articles, were adopted, that we would be, we'd be somewhere in the, in the middle third, but, but higher up in the mid, higher up in the middle third. So certainly not, we're not leapfrogging people and being, and being number one. I'll show you a couple pictures from different places. As we speak, you know, we have Ducksbury that's doing a big project, you know, North Plymouth is doing a big project, Marsh, you know, Marshfield, you can go and see the, the cam. I was actually peeking through the windows the other day. So I've been to every one of these fields at least, well, the left-hand side I've been at least ten times in the last five years, and the right-hand side I've been at least three times. So I've been to every one of these, every one of these fields, and I feel very confident to say, we are not, we would not be the top one or two by any means. Whitman Hanson just has a facility that we wouldn't want to create and spend that money for. You know, Ducksbury's gonna continue to leapfrog us, you know, the Quincy, North Quincy, the, you know, Memorial Stadium or Veteran Stadium, excuse me, whatever, whatever that one is up there, is a very, is a very nice stadium. But we don't need to be the best. But, so my, my point is just, I think we put forth what the committee wanted to do, which is a very solid plan without getting, you know, without, without unwisely spending the town's money. If we were to do a lesser plan, we would leapfrog, you know, one or two people there. In my, in my estimation, we would be set, we would be, we'd be, we'd be seven, we'd be seven out, we'd be seven out of ten. My only comments on light, lights and turf are just that, at one point, maybe they were considered a luxury item, you know, like a cell phone was considered a luxury item, or anti-lock brakes were only on the, on, on the most expensive cars. The way the, the way the world has developed, this is, I mean, it's, it's standard, it's, it's, it's standard equipment. I, I, I like the school department going, the school committee and the town pushing to get public money, but the Marshfields and the Ducksburies and the North Plymouth North
You mean get private money, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, private money, excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you, private money.
Begging for public and
Yeah, no, no, and, 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 and I will be a don, and I will be a donor, but what I will tell you also is the trend has been that the public-private partnerships, which were very big, like back with, when Cohasset first put theirs in, when Ducksbury first put their first turf, turf field in, there was definitely, you can go to Lincoln Sudbury, and you can see a big plaque on the, on the, on the fields, there was definitely a time when those two things were amenities, and the town and the sports, you know, boosters really got together and dug, and dug deep. And I'm not saying we shouldn't dig, dig deep, I will be, you know, I will be a supporter of this as well, but I just wanted to, I just, I just wanted to state that, because all these other projects are being folded into, you know, school, you know, basically into school, into school projects, new school buildings. I just, you know, ran around and, and, and took some pictures of some of the, you know, some of, some of the local fields. So Cohasset here, turf, lights, track, Hingham Youth Football ended up renting this field for, for, for a number of years, the second. Those are the home bleachers there, we just point out sort of the height and the size of the, of the press box there. You know, that's just, you know, sort of part of what you need to run a, to run a sports complex. One of the few sponsored scoreboards in town, around town, so I think it's Pilgrim Bank or something like that is, is a sponsor, and at one point, people had talked about potentially doing, doing something on sponsorships. Houses, they do have a few houses that are directly, directly across the field from, from that. Situate, three structures on that property, an entryway here, which has two ticket booths on either, two ticket booths on either side, turf, lights, and a track, home bleachers there with, you know, with, with, with press box. The next picture, you can see girls practicing field hockey out there. Field hockey is another reason why, another, another good example of why turf is, turf is a big thing. Field hockey is a sport now that it really is just a, is just, is just a turf sport, and our kids are playing on turf, so it's not a matter of, it's really not a matter of, of, of risk. The kids are already doing it. If everybody has turf and we're playing at their, at their stadiums, and everybody who's renting evening facilities are on, you know, are on turf. The next page is just two other of the, of the buildings. I know, I know, we'd love to have no bathrooms at all. Here's, and, and actually, Situate doesn't, Situate doesn't.
For itself.
These, this, these two buildings here side by side, one's a, it's a combination concession stand, storage facility, and then the one in the very back, you can just sort of see, there is a break there by, by the do not enter sign there, is a, is a storage facility as well. And then this is the, the size of the, the size of the visitors, the visitor stand. And then this is the, the size of the, the size of the visitors, the visitor stands, which we get to stand in when we crush them over Thanksgiving, which is always fun. Ducksbury, just a couple of things I'll point out. So again, turf, lights, track. In this next picture, another one behind that one. So you can see the high school in the back. I, I have the, Ducksbury has a very nice school building website, you know, within their school, and you can actually see all of the schematics if anybody ever wants to go on there and see what's happening. But the building in the back, which is the high school today, is being taken out and as people probably know, they're doing a combo, high school, middle school, across the street where the middle school is right now. And that entire footprint of the, of the high school is going to be two more fields and a 17,000 square foot field house. It's going to have meeting rooms for teams because they'll need them because the, there will be nothing near where the fields are. It's going to have concession stands, and it's going to have at least one court, they, is all I could figure out. So I don't know whether it's an indoor turf facility for their lacrosse, or whether it's a, you know, another basketball or, or what it is. But 17,000, 17,000 square feet is what they're, is what, is what they're building there.
Are they AAA rated? Ducksbury? No, they're not. Okay.
Track and, track and jumping pits. I guess he, the other thing I didn't mention about the Phase 1, which again, I don't take, we don't take any credit for, but when we, when it was designed, little things like the straightaway, so I don't know whether 70% of all activity on a track is done on the straightaways, whether it's hurdles or, or sprints or what have you, we, it was flipped. So now, again, it's still close to the neighbors, but 70% of the activity now is another 75 yards away from, or 60, 50, 60 yards away from where it was before, which I thought was, again, just a, you know, just a little, just the little things that I think are, that are, that I think are important. Hanover, as many people know, read, when they redid the high school, put in a, put in a field, again, turf, lights, and track. The next page, this is my, this is my favorite. Would you hit the, right behind you, would you hit that light just for a second? Yeah. So this is, to me, to me, when somebody says, hey, what do, what do lights look like and how can you control lighting technology? So this is a night game, I think it was Hingham's girls lacrosse or, or hockey plan. Look at the scoreboard. So look between the field ending, you can see the track a little bit, but you can barely even see the posts of the, of the scoreboard. So I, I just point that out as being, you know, again, you know, lighting technology has, you know, has, has, has come up, has come a long, long way. Thank you, I'm sorry. That's great. Thank you. And then the next, so then the last page is simply, again, in a color version of the schematic that was, that was recommended by the committee to the school board and then, and then ultimately, or school committee, and then ultimately, ultimately approved. So again, couldn't move the, putting the other field is not only, it's a, it's not only a puzzle, but it's a two-sided puzzle because you have spring and you have fall. So even if you thought you had something figured out for spring, when you flip it around to fall, you need to be able to use, you need to be able to use the same, the same amount of, the same amount of, of, of space and the space can't, you know, interfere with the other sports. My last, my last slide, ad hoc usage. So we took a first cut and we took a, and we spent a good amount of time, one of the, one of the neighbors, myself and Margaret, met a couple of times on usage. We had a cup, we had a few meetings that were really dedicated to, to usage. It by far was the most discussed, most compromised, and I would say at the end of the day, and then we, and we ended up taking two different votes on it because we had a sound study being done that wasn't done, so we left that for a second vote, and we had sort of the lights and usage first. And at the end of the day, we did get a unanimous vote, but I, you know, I don't think anybody, it was one of those situations, and whether it's a good negotiation or not, and probably we're all in a business where we do negotiations, probably nobody came out feeling like it was the perfect, like it was the perfect solution. And I know it's been revisited several times. My concern, my only concern, and I know, and, but I, I should say, I agree 100% that to revisit, to revisit it in a year and then the following year, and then three years after that, if that gives people peace of mind, I think that's great. I've, I've been to so many events that I, and I know the Hingham kids and the Hingham community that I, I know it's not going to be a problem, but, you know, we, I know further compromises have been made, which, you know, which Carol will go through, but, you know, at the end of the day, I think youth, there are two groups that probably need a little bit more use over time from it, is youth, and then the second is this group that I call taxpayers. You know, adults that, that there's really not, you know, a flexibility for, for them to be using, you know, using many hours on the, on the fields, particularly, particularly the lights and, and sound. And I am done.
You're done? You did great.
Did I do okay?
You did great, yeah.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much. That was very comprehensive.
And I'd like to, at this point, just publicly thank Tim and everybody who served on that committee. I am so grateful, and the rest of the school committee is so grateful for all the hard work, the emotion that took place. I, I don't think you knew exactly, I don't think anybody knew exactly what you were getting into, but you truly all worked hard and communicated well with each other, and we truly appreciate it. I think everybody in the town owes you a debt of gratitude.
Well, you know, they own all, they owe all, all, all the members of gratitude. It's not me, I'm just sitting up here talking.
No, I, I think I said everybody, not just you.
Thanks.
Okay. So I'm going to take it from here and sort of discuss the components individually and their costs. I wanted to let you know that we do have the engineers from Gail here, so if you have specific questions to any of the components, they will pop up and help me. So you have the boards behind me. Let's see if we can put this one up.
Can I, can I be Vanna White for you or something?
You could probably do it better there, from there than I could do it from there.
I think we're good.
I'll just switch when she's done.
So the first item, which we hadn't really anticipated, was relocating the softball field across the street. We felt that that gave us some more room for increased landscaping and various other reasons. So that is 169, and these are estimates, we are going out to bid shortly, it's already, advertised in the central register, so we will be at town meeting with real numbers. So the relocation of the softball field is $169,000. The reconstruction of the baseball and field hockey fields, which is where we've had the major drainage issues in the past, is $443,275. The construction of the multi-purpose synthetic field is $9,991 and $812, which is in that location. Ultimately, after we went through the permitting process, this is the best location, it truly is the only location for this field within our 26 acres. The, the bleachers, and I know there's been some discussion on the, on the bleachers, we're taking the bleachers down. We currently have over 1,900 seats available now. Alan Michelson, we will be constructing a two-way, two-way bleacher. So in between the track and the multi-purpose field, we'll have our home stand, which will be able to hold 100, 1,578 visitor, home people. And then facing the track, there's 387 seats. The reason we need track seats is, as you know, track is our most popular sport. Track has over 200 athletes. It's a wonderful thing. Everybody gets to play, there are no cuts. People who get cut or discouraged in another sport come over and run track and they're welcomed. As a result, we have 200 parents that will show up from our own, you know, if every student brings one parent to watch a track meet, that's 200 parents, and then if the other team shows up and they bring people, we, we need all those seats, every single one of those seats facing the track. And then on the visitor's side, because we don't want to encourage too many visitors, we have 237 visitor seats on the multi-purpose field. So that costs $700, $757,000. We have a state-of-the-art public address system. PA was a big issue. We had sound study completed. There was two sound systems that were presented to us. We chose the more expensive one, and it's the same deal with the lights, right? The taller the lights, the less fill. We found with the sound system, the more expensive system, the larger the speakers, the more, the better, well, the more carefully they're placed, the more speakers within the bleacher system, the less spillage of noise, so to say. So that's $100,000. The bleacher removal and landscaping and fencing between the high school property and Downing Street is $204,000. The concession stand and facilities, and we have some great news there, $528,000. That's going out just on a separate bid. It's being designed by Gail as we speak. As you know, we had some issues with bathrooms. We, when we approached the plumbing board, the state plumbing board, our first go-around, they required an unusual amount of bathrooms for us. You know, the, the plumbing codes were built for people who are building Foxborough Stadium, you know, we're not serving beer, and we're not holding five-hour events, so we don't need that many bathrooms. Dr. Gallo went before the state plumbing board and presented an excellent case for the reduction of bathrooms, and we have achieved it. So we are now required, I think it's eight and 12, eight men, 12 women, we all know why. The other...
Which seems like an exorbitant number, but it is well less than, well less than half of what the code calls for.
Right, right. Which is wonderful. And the other good news along with that is that they also allowed us to build separate facilities for one bathroom, so we don't have to keep all bathrooms available, open all the time. We will have separate entrance for one bathroom, each male, female, that will be, because we were all talking about who's going to clean it, you know, who wants to do that maintenance class, so we, we will be able to reduce costs there. So that's the concession stand. Okay, here was a, parking, as you all know, we did the parking study, which came back and was, you know, it, it wasn't awful. It said we handled our parking and traffic well, except for large events like town meeting, you know, election day. It, it was more town events that caused the increased traffic and parking issues. So we worked with, with Mike Perino very closely. You have a copy of the new parking and traffic guidelines in there that we worked very hard to agree on and have, has been approved by planning as well as Mike. That costs $748,000. The new press box and the ADA lift, which is required, for, for the press boxes, $55,000. The perimeter fencing, we, we had several fencing schemes. When, if you went through the slides, you'll, if you remember Situate, they, it was the stainless steel. We went with all-black chain link fence, which originally presented to us was a more decorative, beautiful black fence, but we felt chain link, first of all, would be fine. By making it black, it's less noticeable. And you'll, you'll be able to see that in the schematics. You really kind of see through the black as opposed to the stainless steel. Field lighting is $320,000. And then site drainage, bonds, insurance, and demo is $116,000, which right now brings our price tag to, you know, 4.5 million. There is a deduction in there for natural grass. We however did not receive a recommendation for our natural grass field from ad hoc, and school committee did not adopt a recommendation for, for natural grass, grass field.
What do you mean by deduction for natural grass?
So if we were to multi-purpose field, if that were not synthetic...
Oh, oh, I see, okay.
There, you would lower that price tag down. Okay. So what I wanted to talk about tonight in a little bit more detail would be the warrant estimate that we all saw last year at the special town meeting, which estimated this field project between two and 2.7 million dollars. I have to say Mary Powers and I just, you know, kind of worked that up one night with some help from Gail, and pretty much, we were pretty close, for people who don't do this as, as a, as a business. A natural grass, multi-purpose field would cost about half a million dollars. Concession building, 528. The bleachers, the PA, the press box, and I combine these, $912,000. The reconstruction of the baseball field and field hockey, field, 443, 275. Improved landscaping and all fencing, $309,000. And then the bonds insurance on that, be at 116, which brings us in at about 2.8. Now, you can argue some of these. The improved landscaping, you know, we estimated really closer to 100, we've done an extra $100,000 there, based on planning board recommendations. So, I mean, I, you could throw, throw that into unexpected costs, but, you know, I just, I just felt it, I mean, we're pretty close to the original warrant estimate. The amenities and unexpected costs, the synthetic turf, the difference is about $454,000. The field lighting, which we said was an amenity in the warrant article, $320,000. The parking and curbing, $748,000. And then the softball relocation, we hadn't really anticipated moving a field across the street. It's $169,000. So that's the difference. That's truly the difference. I think the parking and curbing, that's solving a town-wide problem. That's something we need to fix for everybody, and we're happy to take that on. So we have some good news with all those numbers. We have secured private funding for the lights, so we can take that number out. We did receive, if approved at town meeting, $50,000 from CPC funds, that will be able to reduce the cost of relocation of the softball field because that's what they allocated it to. And there are active fundraising efforts going on right now. We have a huge party planned for Saturday night. It was sold out, over 500 people attending, and there's a waiting list. This, it has been a truly private and public partnership. We promised it would be, and we're here to deliver that promise. We've worked very hard on it. Ted, that forecast looks awesome. It's going out positive next few years. This is the right time to take on this project. We've waited since 2005. Our children deserve it. Parents have worked hard. I, I met Mr. Larry the other day. Mr. Larry, Stephen Larry started 20 years ago asking the town to put lights on the fields. His kids are now having kids. I babysat his kids. It's been a long time coming, and I think the stars are aligned.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to go through the usage policy? You have it.
You know, I, what I'd really like to do is have an opportunity for, for comments and questions on what you've presented so far from the board. And, I don't know, the usage policy, I, I will if the board really wants me to, it's very, it's detailed and complicated and is the, really the department of another board, so I'm not sure how in-depth we want to get into the usage policy.
It will come up at town meeting, that's for sure.
Yes, yes.
So if you need to make a sale...
I see, eat and dream this usage policy. I believe you.
Well, let me just ask first about comments and questions on what's been presented so far. Do you want me to go first?
Sure.
Questions? Thank you very much, and thank you to everybody that's worked on the multiple ad hoc task forces. Carol, you actually explained the first one, and that was the bleacher seat count, because there was an awful lot of noise out there that we were going to have a lot more seats when in fact we have less. And then thankfully, the bathroom update, because I have trouble with taking care of three and a half, and I was wondering how you take care of 26, never mind 52. But the new number sounds reasonable, and especially the accommodation where you can only have one for the smaller events. I thought that was great. You've addressed another of my concerns, which was the total cost of ownership by reducing the number of bathrooms, how you keep it clean with the additional janitors that you might need, and I think this may be part of just the field rental and whatever. The new fields, I'm assuming, because I have some other comments with pieces of information that I've been collecting along the way, the new fields... Uh, the new fields, probably when everything is in, and especially the turf field, will save in travel time and unplanned travel costs, where you have to, when a field is not playable, and you have to have a practice, or when our kids make it to some kind of playoff, and they're gonna play on turf, and if we don't have turf, they've got to be taken somewhere, because I didn't realize there's a big difference. You know, being from the dark ages, we didn't have turf. Um, and by understanding of the usage policy, the number of days that lights and sound can be used in, in combination or separately, actually for games turn out to be sixty-two days out of a hundred, uh, three hundred and sixty-five.
That's correct, yeah.
And that's sixteen point nine percent of a year of days, and it's not a whole day. It's a piece of a day. So, that seems very reasonable. Um, what I would ask you is, I'd like to see the school put some skin in the game here, where you're, we're gonna get private money, and hopefully you're gonna maximize the opportunity for private money to come in, and hopefully some naming opportunities based on our naming policy. I'm looking for you all to put skin in the game and put a healthy portion, I don't know what the number is, of your rental receipts into maintenance of the complex, both near-term maintenance and then some money to be put away so that when we have to replace the turf field, or take care of the concession stand, there's at least seed money there, much like we're gonna do with the whole facilities management thing for the town. But, this is the time to do it for the new complex that's going in. And then I would look very much for you all to maximize the rental of the fields under your usage policy, so that you do get the money coming in, and that you can pay, defray a lot of the taxpayer cost for the fields. And here's what I've been collecting along the way. Um, and as soon as we get through town meeting, we are gonna pull the group together to talk about a master plan for recreation and athletics, and also, how do you maintain all of these athletic facilities that we have in town? Because it's not only the new ones that it looks like we're gonna build, but the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, however, numbers of tennis courts we've got out there. And it's pay me thirty thousand now, or wait a couple of years and pay me ninety thousand. And that's, Capital's talked about that since I went on Capital in two thousand and two. And we continue to talk about it. But also, when you have a grass field, you can only use it so much, and then you have to let it rest. And that needs to be plotted out, and how do you manage that? Um, sports is growing. Now, we've got about seventy-five percent of the high school kids participate, and that's up from sixty-some percent. And I'm sure if you look in the dark ages, when all of us were there, it's, it's like legions ahead, because there really wasn't much, and there was virtually nothing for girls. Um, there's also the need now for adult fields. That sport, the sports for adults are growing by leaps and bounds. Over the last couple of years, we've lost fields. When the New East was built, we've lost two fields there, and they've not been replaced. Um, the middle school, we've lost probably three fields there. Optimistically, the new fields will be playable, very optimistically, the spring of two thousand and sixteen. Realistically, probably mid-two thousand and sixteen. Until then, the sports, and whether you like it or not, sports are a way of life, and it's not, it's not gonna change. So, we've got to find space for the kids to play sports until the new fields kick in. Um, we're also spending, and this is something I'm still collecting information on, money is being spent to take our kids out of town because we don't have facilities, either new ones or repair, uh, fields in good repair. Uh, we've got one sports organization that only played four games, four of their home games in Hingham. Um, this group has spent over fourteen thousand dollars to take kids out of town to rent fields. If this new complex passes, that money will stay in Hingham. Plus, the transport of the kids out of town won't have to happen. Got another group that is paid seventy-five hundred dollars a year, so that the boys and girls, high school lacrosse, can hold their tryouts in Cohasset before the beginning. All of that money can stay in Hingham. Um, there's another group that when our kids make the playoffs, if they're gonna be playing on turf, you're gonna be spending upwards of a thousand dollars to take these kids so that they can practice on turf. And I'm gonna have to figure out what a turf field feels like and stuff. Um, also, growing up in Florida, and I realize it was the dark ages, where we used lanterns for light and the whole thing, but, you know, in Florida, it's warm and it stays light for most of the year. Here, the reality is, when we begin our sports season in the fall, it gets dark and it gets cold. So, I do think now is the time for lights. There's a lot more for us to read and to understand how the warrant articles are laid out. But to me, the information, if I get rid of the emotion, what's best for the town in terms of money, both short-term and long-term, moving towards a new sports area, where you take care of the facility, so that we don't end up with a track that's falling apart, where we don't end up with fields that are more like mud flats. And I guess the mud bowl's okay, but if you're doing that the better part of the year, that's probably not such a good thing. But, can you respond to a couple of my questions and some of the ramblings?
Yes, um, so your first, I think your real first question, I'm just gonna put that other picture up there, um, is that, uh, the charging, the rental fee?
Yes.
So, uh, we do charge, we currently charge now, people don't pay us a lot for our current fields, but, um, that goes into a field maintenance account, and we use those funds to ke- take care of everything, you know, the, the fields at the high school, the tennis courts, anything we need to do. So, we will do that. We will, we will, those funds will go into our field maintenance account, and we will use, use that money towards, um, the operating of the, of this complex. Your other question in regard to travel, we, we, um, several of our teams did have to, um, cancel games. Notre Dame, um, NDA up in Hingham did allow us to use their fields when we needed to. Um, it's, it's really some of these sports that have been, um, taking on a lot of those additional charges, which, you know, they're nonprofits, and we'd love to keep the kids in Hingham, so, um, there is a, a unexpected cost associated with not having good fields in town.
And also the Title IX requirements now.
Right, Ti- Title IX, um, we really don't have a stadium, a- and, and we're not building a stadium, I guess is, I shouldn't have used that word, but we don't have a field where there's, uh, like, I, my, I have a daughter who plays field hockey, so you have to stand on the sides, where we don't have any bleachers. Um, so, we, we do need to offer that same playing experience to girls that the boys have with football.
Which means trucking them out of town, most likely.
Most likely.
Yeah.
Yeah. That also, I'd like to bring, that comes back to the budget. One of the things that was perhaps cut tonight was, um, you know, most schools our size have a Title IX officer. We do not. We just asked for a few extra hours so that we could hire a secretary to, um, document those needs, so, it's another Title IX.
Do you, do you have any ideas yet how much private money is gonna be raised?
Um, well, we ha- we know we have enough money for the lights. There's a large fundraiser on Saturday night where we are, um, asking for donations for bleacher seats. It's, um, you know, we do expect to raise a lot of money from that, so, you know, I would expect us to raise five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's a lot of work, and we have some great partners that we really need to thank when this whole thing's over.
Okay. I'll ask questions. No speech. The cost figures that you put up, and, and thank you for breaking that out. People were asking, what did we say back last year? And you, you've delineated that. You've also answered the question about how much we hope to raise. I think you're gonna need that number before, very quickly. So, we have a rough idea, are we asking for four million, or something less than that? Okay? So, that would be a good thing.
Could you define very quickly for me?
Three point two million. That's what I'm having my-
No, no, very quickly.
That's my number.
No, no, when do you want the number by?
The time, Monday, if you could do it, that's when we're supposed to vote, but you can't.
No.
Um, but you'll have a better idea Monday after Saturday, I'm, I'm sure. So, um, I, I, that's, that's the number that we need to think about. Uh, the parking question, when you put that up. I know the chief had written a letter for a hundred and sixty-eight additional spaces, which was addressing some of the parking issues related to town stuff, and also, though, his experience with, with, um, with, uh, sports events. How many, how many spaces do we net out of this?
I think we, um, gain a hundred. A hundred and three.
Hundred and three, is that what it is?
Plus, we have a plan for, um, I forget what we called it. Overflow, thank you. So, the overflow parking area-
Would you like me to shoot?
I think, let me see how I do.
She's good.
So, it's, it'll, there'll be a gate right here. Can you see that, Bruce?
Okay.
There'll be a gate right here that we've, um, agreed to give both the fire and the police department keys to, so they'll, they'll have access to it. That will open up, and there'll be additional parking that takes place here. There's room for eighty-eight cars.
Eighty-eight, so a hundred and eighty-eight is the net if, to get at that-
The increase. We've also added, um, additional handicap parking and visual parking here, right here.
Okay.
And this will be staff-only parking, because everybody's worried that, you know, some kid's gonna click.
Carol, while you were up there, can you show the pathway? Because I think one of the good things Chief Perino did was the pathway is large enough so that an emergency vehicle-
Can travel.
-can travel on it to get right to the field. So, an ambulance can go right up to either the stands or the fields, wherever they're needed.
We're also hoping the kids will walk that way, which instead, ruining their shoes in the fields. And also, picture Margaret in her little golf cart driving down that path.
Okay, good. Good. The Title IX component that Irma referenced, how close does, I know it gives us more flexibility. Will this make us compliant with Title IX? Or are we still gonna have more to do?
We, well, you know, it's, um, facility-wise, facility-wise, this gets us there. We still have a few-
The, the administrative side of it.
Issues, maybe, yeah.
Okay, okay. That's, that's important. The softball field, I thought Tim mentioned, that is out of the picture. I want to get to the drainage. The drainage issue that has come up, um, it came up in two thousand and five. It didn't make it on the other charts. Uh, I know you were moving the softball field. How much of drainage is addressed by this?
Actually, um, a lot of the drainage, or the majority of the drainage is addressed by this plan. Um, what we've, what we found out is that the fields, the parking lot, and the roof of the high school drain to one pipe. Do you wanna ca- that, this one is you, buddy.
I'm waiting.
I, I know about the thirty-by-twenty-four inch pipe, and under the ro-
Thirty to twenty-four.
For thirty, twenty, thirty to twenty-four, the thirty.
Does this mean we're not gonna see, I thought the picture that Peter Bickford had was profound with a canoe going up Union Street. Will that, will this take care of it?
Could you just identify yourself for the folks at home?
I will, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm Bill Seymour, I'm the director of civil engineering for Gail, and, uh, this has been a real pleasure. It really has. It's been a very fun project, and like, thank you for letting us be part of it. I'd like to start with the parking lot real quickly. Today, you've got a parking lot that's non-compliant with stormwater management policy. There's, there's no treatment, there's no attenuation. In developing the new parking, not only are we attenuating and treating the stormwater flows off of it, we're also capturing all of the stormwater that's coming off the existing parking lot and mitigating that as well. And that's generally flowing to this portion of the property, and I'll, I'll summarize the drainage provisions to suggest that we're capturing it, we're treating it, and we're attenuating it such that the rate of off-site flows is less than the existing condition today, and the volume is going to be equivalent to that which is leaving the site today. So, and that's pretty straightforward. Um, and obviously, this is being, uh, reviewed and vetted by the conservation commissioner and by the planning board, um, and the town's reviewer, John Cheshire, is extraordinary in the detail of his review, so we're very confident in our, in our results. Today, there's an issue with regard to a thirty-inch to twenty-four-inch pipe in this vicinity here. The majority of the drainage that flows through which has nothing to do with the athletic complex. The major, the vast majority is the paved areas and the roofed areas of, of the school proper. The pipe is at an inappropriate slope, and it transitions inappropriately from a thirty-inch pipe to a twenty-four-inch pipe. We've, we've done some things in the design of these fields, particularly as it relates to the synthetic turf field, which drains essentially vertically and recharges a great deal of stormwater, which mitigates some of the drainage issues associated with that aspect of the parcel. In the absence of a synthetic turf field, uh, solving the town's problem that exists today would be a real challenge. I, I'm not saying it would be impossible, but it would be very, very expensive. By, uh, the real drainage and one of the most compelling deficiencies in the existing athletic campus is the drainage associated with this area here. And, and you're all familiar with it, you've seen the pictures. It's a result of a number of things. First of all, the surcharge in the pipes due to the constraint in the pipe that we've already described under Union Street has something to do with it, but not a lot. The field fundamentally, uh, has no grading scheme. It's concave in many places. Not only is it flat, it's absolutely concave. Number two, the soils are very, very heavy, very clay, very heavily compacted soils. What the project proposes to do, in addition to the synthetic turf field, which has great drainage characteristics, is to completely rebuild that area. That's why we're rebuilding the baseball field, not because you need a new baseball field in terms of its geometry or its amenities. It needs to be rebuilt because it's fundamentally broken in terms of how it drains. We're going to lift it up, we're going to put an under drainage system underneath it, we're going to rebuild the root zone such that it's a much more free-draining material, and most importantly, because we have a synthetic turf field here, we're gonna take a lot of the loads off of that field that it's sustaining today in terms of use. So, it's a win-win-win-win. Now, as a result of replacing the pipe with a straight thirty-inch pipe under Union Street, plus the reduction of flows associated with this field, and some other improvements that we're making, again, we're going to release stormwater, uh, we're gonna decrease the height of the surcharge in this underground drainage system because of the back flow, the backwater effect, uh, by two and a half feet. We're going to release stormwater at essentially the same rate, because we've taken a lot of those flows out, at least the part that we can, without really dealing with the major problem over here, uh, and the volume's going to be a little bit less, again, because we're taking some water out of that flow. And that's a very long answer to your question, sir, and if you've got others, I'll-
Yes, you have to move a sewer pipe, I understand.
That's correct. It's the, right now, there's a thirty-inch pipe that, for reasons that we don't know historically, transitions to a twenty-four-inch pipe, and it shouldn't. It was designed to be a thirty-inch pipe. We're proposing to put a thirty-inch pipe back in there today.
And I understand the designs today can accommodate that.
It can. One of the complicating issues is that there's a lot of utilities in Union Street. There's a forced sewer main, there's a significant water line, and, and some electrical utilities. The, the pitch at which we put the thirty-inch pipe back, and it will be plastic, not, not reinforced concrete, it'll be HDP, high-density plastic, um, will still be pitched, uh, at less than an optimal angle because of, we're weaving it through some existing utilities. So, the system will have to surcharge a little in order to force water through it, but we've eliminated the problem where the degree of surcharge is basically at the existing elevation of the fields.
Okay.
How, Bill, how old are those pipes?
I don't know that.
Are they old, or are they-
I, I think, I, I think that they're in the order of thirty years old, but I'm not certain of that, and I do think that the thirty-inch section is older than the twenty-four-inch section, which I suspect, and we don't, nobody knows this, was a retrofit to, that, uh, to accommodate some other utilities that went into Union Street, and it was a bad compromise, for whatever reason. And we're gonna fix it. At some significant expense that wasn't programmed into the original budget for the project, because obviously, no one knew the nature of the problem.
No. And I know, and you're adding curbing, and, and that's gonna increase the flow. Not a mu- a lot, but-
I did want to point that out, sir. Also, in addition to the hundred and three net increase in parking spaces, we've also now got two points of access in Egress, and both of those have better line of sight than you have today, and both of those have turning lanes, multiple lanes, uh, for queuing of traffic and allowing for, uh, left, right, left-turning movements. and allowing for left, right, left-turning movements that you don't have today. The other improvements are that there is signage for no parking all along Union Street, and Union Street is going to be reconstructed by the DPW at some point in the next 12 months. And we've incorporated granite curbing and lowman seating of those margins, A, for aesthetic purposes, but more importantly, to encourage people not to park along the street where they're not authorized to do so.
Right, that's what I understand. Okay, thank you, that was very detailed, thank you very much. Carol, you explained the seat reduction and the number we're going from. Let me, a question I've been asked. You said we designed this for the 26 acres that are available to us. Did we look in any other locations, like up over Route, around Route 3? There are some vacant properties up there, but that's just a wild issue. I was just curious, has that ever come up?
We didn't, we felt, for several reasons, we weren't authorized really to make a land purchase. And then, it's easier and less complicated for the school department not to have to bus students off-site in order to participate in sports. It's easier to have them come out of the doors and onto the field.
Right, okay. No, I thought so, but I wanted to give you the opportunity to answer that question. Dover, are we invoking Dover?
We are.
We are invoking Dover.
Although, it doesn't feel like it, but we are.
Okay, fine, that's very straightforward. And the partnership is, the money issue, and you're working that. The location, you asked me. In your budget, when we were addressing the Margates Field issue, one of the things we put in was the estimates for maintenance costs, which is a point Irma made earlier. And these turf fields have a tendency to wear out and need to be replaced. So, what we want to make sure is, and sir, we spend a lot of time on capital, that we may be committing ourselves to a capital expenditure, and we should know what that estimate is to replace that.
And in your package, you have why install synthetic multipurpose field, and we've done a 30-year cost-benefit analysis for you. And it actually shows that, over the course of 30 years, and I'm not gonna go through the numbers.
I can read them. I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
The cost and maintenance of a regular natural grass field is about $26,000, $28,000 a year with, you know, fertilizing, liming, mowing, striping. Really, with turf fields, what's that thing called, you just rake it, right? Like rumor. It needs to be replaced, but if you take a look at that over the cost of 30 years, it really is about break even. And we have the cost, you know, estimated cost, I mean, who knows what it will be. It might come down significantly in 15 years.
No, I understand. Okay, okay. You answered my questions, thank you.
Can I ask one more?
Of course.
Okay. At least one more.
Yeah.
Be disappointed if I didn't ask. On your ADA-compliant bleachers for 757, if you had to break out the money you had to spend to make them ADA-compliant versus just bleachers, you have that number, how much of this 757 is really for the ADA piece?
The lift? Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, the existing bleachers don't just meet, not meet ADA code. They don't meet structural code, architectural code, life safety code.
But other than that, they're okay?
We don't need a speech, answer the question, please.
And to try to get to all of those.
No, they're metal.
Well, not the.
I'm not sure what it is you're asking. To meet all of those codes and to bring your bleachers up to all of those codes is what these bleachers cost.
But like you had to put a lift in?
The lift is about $35,000, $40,000.
Okay, some kind of ramp?
There's ramps, there's parking bays, there's companion bays. Off the top of my head, I would.
Twenty-five percent?
I would say probably $75,000 all in is a very rough estimate.
Anything else?
Not yet.
No?
No, good. Okay. Thank you very much for that very, very complete discussion. Let me just say a little bit about what the process is. There are three articles advanced by the school committee relative to this project. The first is an article which would authorize the town to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the money to do the project as laid out before you here today, without the synthetic fields and without the lights. Did I hear that right?
No, it is with the synthetic fields. It just says grass.
Go to Y. Okay, well, okay, I'm on Y, then Z, Z is what? I have three articles here. Maybe you can run them down for me.
Okay. So, in Article Y, we have construction of a multipurpose playing field with associated fencing, landscape drainage. It isn't actually specific, it doesn't actually say synthetic or natural grass.
Okay.
The reason being, it's what was recommended to us from ad hoc, it's what school committee voted on. And it is the best drainage situation for the field in general, as well as playing ability and field time. We cannot, if this were to be natural grass, we wouldn't be able to allow field hockey on it after football. I mean, it just.
So, you are contemplating if Article Y were to pass, and it were the only one to pass, that you would construct a synthetic field?
Right.
Okay, so then, can you explain Article Z?
Article Z, I'm sorry. I think so. Is this the right one? Yeah, go ahead, I'll let, you know, Ray constructed the articles, so I will let him discuss.
I'm confused.
Thanks, Ray Estes, Vice Chair of the School Committee. I didn't construct the articles, there were many hands at work. I perhaps was the primary drafter, did the initial drafts, and there were several iterations, including this afternoon.
Yes, I know.
We just got them.
I understand. So, Carol's exactly right, that the intention all along, once the ad hoc committee made its recommendation to the school committee, was to construct an artificial turf field because of various reasons. Article Z asks the town to pay for that artificial turf field. The school committee's intention today is if Article Z were not to pass, but Article Y were to pass, that we would construct an artificial turf field, but find private funding to do so. That's just plain and simple.
Okay, I understand. Okay, and then, the last article is Article AA, which, can you just explain that for us?
Article AA is, it goes back to really what we promised we would do, and that is, give the town an opportunity to weigh in on lights. Certainly, the town has had several opportunities in the past to vote yea or nay on the placement of lights at the field. And we, by wording this article the way we did and including it, were being true to our promise in the prior town meeting warrant, where we're asking the town to approve the installation of the lights. As Carol indicated, the $320,000 plus maintenance account has already been pledged by private donors. So, we will not be asking the town to pay for that, but merely to approve the installation of the lights.
But would you need to do that under Dover? I thought, when you invoked Dover, lights are included.
That's right. And if I could just clarify, with all due respect, and I think Susan Murphy would agree with me, that we didn't really invoke Dover. There is case law that makes it clear that the Dover Amendment applies as a matter of law. And in fact, even if we had not invoked Dover, and there were some challenge in court, a judge would apply Dover as a matter of law, because that's the law that applies to our situation.
Because you're an educational facility.
That is correct. So, just to clarify that. But you're, actually, you're right. Frankly, we don't need the town's permission to install lights.
You need the town to pay for it.
No, not anymore.
Not anymore.
So.
We were asking the town for approval because we said we would, because we knew it was an important issue to the town, particularly neighbors who live in that area. And that's why we've spent so much time doing the lighting study, meeting with neighbors, the ad hoc committee meeting 25 times, and listening to folks' concern, and making sure that we could minimize. And if you go back to the slide of the Hanover Field, which I've been at, that Tim mentioned, and the last time I think I appeared, and we talked briefly about that. You stand in one place and you're in light, you stand in another, you're in darkness. And, you know, the technology is such that.
Let me just, a logistical question. What if Article Z doesn't pass?
That's gonna be my question.
You mean, double A?
Is it double A, I'm sorry? Yeah, double A, I'm sorry.
That certainly is possible.
And then what?
Would you revert to the 35-foot lights?
Yeah, I think we go back to the drawing board and see what.
Amend Article Y, or?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure. You know, the.
Yeah, we'd have to discuss it within school committee.
Would you go back to the 35-foot lights, which you could do like tomorrow?
No, no. I mean, if.
It's not the right thing to do. It's not the right thing to do for the neighbors, it's not the right thing to do for the sports teams.
35-foot lights would shine in the windows of the neighbors, and that would not be acceptable to us, nor would it serve the purposes that we're seeking, which is to provide quality lights. If you remember the November 11th game, a year and a half ago, that we had, we had very short lights, and it was against Duxbury. The Duxbury coach complained because there were shadows all over the field. Didn't hurt, didn't stop his team from winning.
I remember the Margates Light discussion, and that was exactly the issue, that you had to have the height to get the benefit.
I would point out that Article AA only requires a majority vote.
So, yes, that's a good point. And I will point out that the article which would approve the project, as you see before you, does require a two-thirds vote because it involves borrowing funds. That's the plan for financing it, will be to borrow the funds. So, that will require a two-thirds vote, the other two articles require 50% to pass. And if you don't have any further questions or comments right now.
I have one more, I do.
Actually, Madam Chairman, Article Z would require a two-thirds as well, since there is borrowing contemplated.
That's right, it does say borrow.
Yes.
Sure enough.
Two-thirds on that one.
Okey-dokey, thank you for sharing that out.
A quick question, I know there was, thank you for all of the work you all have done on this, but the Planning Board sent something to Conservation, which I heard was gonna be heard Monday night? Is that right? And then, it goes back to the Planning Board?
It's the drainage.
On the drainage issue that we just discussed, okay.
So, we'll be there.
So, we'll be there. So, that is a part of the project that has, awaits confirmation of somebody approving it? I understand it's pretty good.
The Planning Board has essentially approved the project subject to acceptable result on drainage, which the Conservation Commission has been taking up as recently as last Monday, and will continue and hopefully conclude its hearing on Monday.
Hopefully, the fourth, and if not the fourth, the 11th is what I was told.
So, then, it's actually going to go back to the Planning Board for another vote?
I'm not sure that it is necessary, it may be. It may be necessary, right, it may be, the vote of the Planning Board was contingent upon the successful completion of the drainage plan. I believe it does have to go back to planning just for a confirmatory acknowledgement of that.
Because we're just trying to figure out the timeline of everything happening.
So, when do we, do we have to wait to vote till after planning?
You know, we don't have to, we can decide to if we choose. Let me just make, clarify for people what we, what our role in this is. Every article that comes before town meeting, we usually hear it, as we are tonight, and we take a position on it. But our position is not binding on anyone for anything. It is, in fact, a recommendation to the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee will take up all of these articles, and when they take their vote, they will listen to what we say and what all of you say. And when they have taken their vote, whatever they approve will become the motion on the floor of town meeting. It may be a motion to approve this article, it may be a motion for no action on it, or it may be a motion containing different details than the article that's been presented. They have those powers. So, that's what, that we are engaged in coming up with our opinion to provide to the Advisory Committee and to town meeting for your consideration.
Madam Chairman, if I could just point out with respect to logistics and your vote, and whether or not you could take it tonight or need to delay. If you recall, on the middle school project, we went to town meeting for the financing first, and then permitted after.
Yes.
In this instance, we chose to start the permitting first, and, so that we could go out to bid and have a firm number, and then, really, the key reason was so that we could start the construction right at the end of the school year.
Yeah, we were not gonna vote tonight under any circumstances, because this is our first time through the big-picture presentation. We had currently had it on the agenda to vote at our meeting, which will be happening at 8:30 on Monday morning. But we may, you know, as we choose, change when we're gonna vote. I myself don't personally feel the need to wait for the completion of the drainage plan, because things are gonna keep changing. I mean, besides that, there will be more changes, and most particularly, the numbers are gonna change. So, that's not my feeling, but my colleagues may feel differently.
I'm good.
Okay, so then, I hear you. Okay, we'll figure out when we're gonna vote on this, when we get.
Well, there's a process and a precedent. Normally, when we put something before the Planning Board for town meeting, I think we should wait their decision. My understanding is that they will probably approve, at least that's what I'm being informed by the Planning Administrator. But it hasn't passed Conservation, they thought it was gonna pass Conservation this week. It's now March 4th, maybe, March 11th. I do understand that we're up against the clock, and that's another issue. And the clock we're up against is the publication of the warrant, which is March 20th.
All of this could go into the supplement also.
That's right, that's another option.
We're also up against the clock of the Advisory Committee, who may, if we wait too long, take their vote without waiting to find out what we think about it. And I'm sure you don't want that to happen, so I don't know if anybody knows what the Advisory Committee's.
They're voting Monday night.
Yeah, I believe Advisory is voting next week. And just with regard to the timing, we certainly will need a supplement, because we will not have the hard numbers for the cost of this until right up to town meeting.
Okay.
I'm disappointed you're not voting tonight. I thought it was published on Monday that you were voting tonight.
Published.
It's on the agenda tonight.
And the agenda, it said to.
No, it just says, update from School Fields Committee. Vote on school budget, but update from School Fields Committee tonight.
And if I may, this is, the number has changed. It was 4.7 million a couple of weeks ago, and I appreciate what you've done to reduce that.
It's gonna keep changing.
And it's gonna keep changing. So, we'd like to go with the best number, I think that's my.
Well, would you like the Advisory Committee to know what you think before they vote?
Yes, and we can talk about that on Monday.
Okay, so we will, I'm assuming we will vote on Monday then, if it's your choice?
Maybe.
Okay, we might need to tell the people when we're gonna vote, because they might like to know.
I think it's important that we have an established commission, the Conservation Commission. They've got something under judgment. If, I have no reason, unless somebody can, Conservation, I have no reason to believe they're gonna defeat it. But then, why is it going back to the Planning Board? And I would rather have it go through it. If we know that's the process, let's vote on it, we can vote on it a week later.
Okay, I just take note of the fact that the Advisory Committee doesn't have the same concerns. They're voting Monday night. So, if you want them to know your opinion, we would need to vote before then. I'm just, that's their timeline, so that's what.
That may make one decision.
That's the reality, so.
That's the reality.
So, anyway.
Do you guys vote if you vote?
Pardon me?
Can you vote on whether you're gonna take a vote Monday?
Can the chair determine whether to take a vote or not?
This is a gray area. We usually try to.
We try to work these out.
Try to work these things out by talking about it, so I'm sure. But we're not done with our discussion, because there is a fourth warrant article related to the fields. And it is a petition article related to the construction of the school fields. And I think what I'd like to do is hear the presentation of that article, and then, at that point, I will open the floor for some discussion, once we have every, all the articles out on the floor. It won't be a long period of discussion, because there have been 25 meetings on this already. So, the discussion is more for our information than anything else. I'd like to invite the proponents of the Article BB, School Fields Petition, up, and. Okay, if you could just please introduce yourselves and.
Ben Burnham, 11 Downing Street, this is Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street. I have a little setup to do, if I could, quickly.
Okay, can you talk while you're setting up? Can Beth talk while Ben is setting up?
Will you be giving us copies of?
I can get you copies, yes, electronic, yep.
That would be good. If you could maybe email them to Kristen or to Ted.
Absolutely.
They can get them to all of us. We work better if we have something to read.
No problem.
Oh, my.
Oh, my. Is this something we said?
Beth and I are members of a group of Hingham residents who've put forth our own warrant article for the high school fields. We're the petition warrant article. We are the proponents for the high school fields. Yes, please. The name of our group is Citizens for a Balanced Field Project. Before I get into the specifics, the details of our warrant article, I first just want to cover a brief history. The presentation is only 15 to 17 minutes. It's going to be marched soon, in about two and a half hours. I'll make this quick. Town meeting in 2011, there was a warrant article to study the fields. You heard it was a resounding yes. It was 87%. And in that were five main points. Remove those old bleachers permanently. Those are the ones over budding Downing Street. Expand the parking. Repair the water problems, the drainage, and install a multipurpose game field at an estimated cost of $2 to $2.75 million. Our warrant article does all these things. We adhere to that 2011 town meeting warrant article. First, repair and improve the fields. Everyone knows they're substandard, and they're dangerous for athletic events. I've heard stories about some field hockey players getting hurt. They're embarrassing. We need to fix those fields for our children. That is an absolute. But our warrant article will also preserve the open space. As Frederick La Ohmsted, the architect for World's End, said it best, that it must stay true to its surroundings. And the value is the genius of this space, and once we consume open space, it's gone forever. Our warrant article will adhere to these principles. It will also respect Historic Center Hingham. Hingham and history are synonymous. The first time I came to Hingham, it was for a wedding. It was in the early 90s. As I came down Main Street near Glad Tiding's Plain, that's when I knew I was going to settle here and raise my family. To me, Hingham is history, and we've set up three organizations to honor and value that. Our warrant article will respect Hingham's history. And we're also gonna minimize taxpayer expense. So, we were all recently reassessed, and our property taxes went up. We have some impending assessments, both the middle school, which has not come online yet, I believe that's next year, and some unfunded educational mandates, most specifically the park assessment. The park assessment is gonna take the place, as my understanding of MCAS, is gonna be electronic testing for grades 3 through 12. And there's gonna be some capital requirements for that. I also heard about the firehouse tonight. So, we have some impending assessments. This is a short list. Now to the specifics of our warrant article. We talked about the bleachers, and there they are. Finally, we have a picture of them. They're awful. They gotta be decommissioned. They're junk. They're gone in our warrant article. And as Tim Schoyer said, they don't owe us a dime. They've outlived their useful life. We remove those bleachers in our warrant article, as described by Gale Associates and the school committee. The parking. Everyone knows about the parking violations that occur over and around the school. Now, it's not just because of athletic events. It's also because of what happens in the building. You see that SUV there, but on the other side, that's a sidewalk, and all those cars are parked on it. So, Chief Parino has pledged to help with enforcement, and that's an important piece of all of this. Incidentally, the owner of that SUV is here in the room, and I've... They can thank me after the fact because I photoshopped the license plate out for them.
Does anyone care to own up to it?
And I have four drivers in my family, so I will take responsibility for it.
So, under our warrant article, we need to expand that parking as described and designed by Gale Associates and the school committee. Our proposal, our warrant article, will expand the parking. Now, here's where we have a few changes, a few differences in our warrant article from the school committees. The water problems and the drainage. I'm told I can't walk away from the mic. Not too far. Okay. Well, I'll speak loudly. I want to call your attention to the design that Gale Associates has done here. It's important to note that these fields here, along this side and across on Union Street, those will remain untouched. So, the drainage problems will be persistent, and that's with both proposals. Our warrant article doesn't address these. The school committee doesn't address these. So, it's just important to note that we may have to address this at a future date. That's the first thing. Under the school committee's proposal, the multipurpose field will be drain, will be free draining. The baseball diamond, obviously, the new parking, and over here is the JV softball field, all free draining. This field here is the varsity softball field, and in their proposal, it is untouched. This is not free draining. It has compacted soils, the same problems that these other fields have. Our warrant article addresses that. Our warrant article will rebuild that field. So, that's repair and drainage. The multipurpose game field, this is where we have the most changes. I have to go back up to the board. Could you turn the light? Thank you, Jill. So, in the school committee proposal, there's a set of fixed bleachers here that service the multipurpose field. Fixed bleachers also on the visitor's side, again, serve the multipurpose field, and then a set of bleachers that will serve the track. 2,200 seats. Under our... Through testimony in the ad hoc committee meetings, we do not have an athletic event, with the exception of two. We do not have an athletic event that has more than 800 spectators. That's current. Under our design, under our warrant article, we build a thousand-seat fixed bleacher system with a little room to grow. We've also combined the visitor and the home side, and there are two reasons for combining those. The first reason, if I drive down Union Street a designated scenic way, I'm looking at the back of a set of bleachers. So, if we move those over to the visitor's side, we respect some open space. The second reason is because of crowding. You'll see the baseball field there with a field hockey field superimposed. If you look in the lower left-hand corner of that slide, you'll see the field hockey field is actually on the sidewalk. And that's because of some crowding. We're trying to put too much in this space. If we move the visitor bleachers to the other side, we gain 15 feet. This, in turn, will give us more space, less crowding. Back to the 1,000 seats. So, I mentioned the two events where we have more than 800. One of them is graduation in June. The other one is a Thanksgiving Day football game every other year. So, in the cases where we need more seating, we can do a flexible, transportable bleacher system. Now, this particular brand, Gale Associates, mentioned this in an ad hoc committee meeting, and that's where I got this name, the brand name. I believe they've worked with this company before. What you see before you is 180 seats. Other seating capacities are available. With an option, you can get an ADA-compliant bleacher system with all the access provisions. It is a single-person push-button setup, and this is important. It doesn't require a team of people. It's through a series of hydraulics. Soft soil setup is also important. We don't have to pour a concrete slab to set this on. We can if we want, but we don't have to have a concrete slab. And that means we can move it throughout the athletic campus. So, if the baseball diamond is having an event, we can move a set of these bleachers over there or across the street, maybe to a soccer game, and the softball field over there. They're also transportable over the road. So, I could, these could be brought to the middle school or one of the elementary schools for an event there. These bleachers offer the most value per seat, the lowest cost per seat. We have two of them. If you see where the 1,000-seat bleachers, 1,000 fixed bleachers are, on the opposite side, there's two of them facing the track. So, for those two events, those two outlier events that we have, these bleachers can be spun around and face the multipurpose field. In our warrant article, we have four of these bleacher systems. I'd like to draw your attention to the amenities building that's over in the left of the slide. The latest I heard, and I know they're still working on an amenities building plan, the latest I heard is 2,360 square feet. That's the size of the amenities building. That's as big amenities building when you consider the size of your own home and the square footage. Because we're doing 1,000 seats, the state plumbing code allows us to reduce the fixture count to half, is what is proposed now. That will reduce the size of the amenities building, which will help open up the space, more open space, and obviously, it reduces the cost. The concession stand. There is a concession stand in the upper right-hand corner. There's also a concession stand at the track. That concession stand is about 66 additional steps away from the fixed bleachers. 66 additional. So, I submit, if you're going for a hot dog, you can walk it off in those 66 steps. So, under our proposal, we have eliminated the concession stand in the amenities building, again, shrinking it further, preserving open space. We don't touch the storage because it's needed, and obviously, the bathrooms are needed as well. 99% of the events will be taken care of by that amenities building. The two other events, we have the high school building for facilities. Now, the press box. So, the school committee is proposing a press box that would serve both sides. It would serve both the track, and it would serve the multipurpose field. We're not changing that. That's a great idea. They've also said that they won't have two competing events. So, there won't be an event on the multipurpose field at the same time there's one on the track. Their press box is three and a half times the size of what we have now. We propose two times the size of what we have now. Will service both sides adequately. So, I'd just like to wrap it up. This is the end of our presentation. Our warrant article will follow the original intent of the 2011 warrant article. It will preserve open space. It will be respectful of Historic Center Hingham. It will alleviate parking issues for the neighbors. It will remove the old, dangerous bleachers. It will address all drainage issues on the high school side of the campus between the two parking lots. And it will expand usage for athletic events with a multipurpose field, so Title IX compliance. And it will minimize the expense to our taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Ben. The cost again?
We're at 3.3 million. Now, that's before any donors. And I know the school committee and the Hingham Sports Partnership is working on a donor program.
And there are no lights?
There are no lights.
And you've solved the drainage problem, is the point you wanted?
Well, now, Gale Associates, you heard them earlier. They are working with Conservation Commission, and John Chessia has not, to my knowledge, I think this will happen on Monday or whenever they meet. I think it's on Monday. Conservation Commission will listen to John Chessia, who's the expert. I believe Gale Associates has given John Chessia their solution for the 30 to 24. So, yes, the cost may go up as a result of whatever is determined in that meeting.
Okay. Is there anything else that, from what you heard tonight, that you would say, now on second thought, I'd put it back in?
No.
This is a great presentation. Can we get copies of it, since this is the first time we're seeing this? Is your press box ADA compliant?
It will also have the lift. I left that out. Excuse me.
Okay.
It will have the lift. ADA compliant, absolutely.
Okay. Are all your bleachers, your permanent bleachers, ADA compliant?
Correct, with ramps.
Can we see a price, just like the school presentation, man?
I have that in electronic form. I guess I could put it up on the...
Could you do that?
It's lengthy.
Then could you make...
We can do it now, or I can just forward it on?
Why don't you forward it on?
Okay.
And then that'll get to us, because it looks like there's an awful lot of questions here. Do you want to see it? All right. Can we read it?
I will. We'll see.
I'm gonna borrow his glasses.
You may have to. Jill, would you get the lights, please?
Dot stuff was an eye test. This may be worse. What kind of glasses do you have?
Really glasses. I have my email on that. Then if you send me the plan, I will get it out to the...
Oh, okay, okay. For background, this is a public document.
We can't see that.
You can't?
No.
No, you really can. I'm sorry.
No.
I will forward that on.
That would be great.
It will also be made available to the AdCom Advisory on Monday when we meet with them, and I'll have plenty of handouts for all there.
What's your maintenance plan? Because where you're not using turf, do you have more or less fields than in the ad hoc proposal?
Well, we're including more in terms of the drainage. We haven't added any more fields. We have the same number of fields that the school committee is proposing. We're just including an additional field that needs drainage.
Have you looked at your maintenance plan where grass fields have to rest after X amount of time so that there's enough to accommodate everybody that uses the fields today?
Right.
Plus, everybody that has to go and buy space out of town?
Correct. No, we haven't looked at the maintenance. We could look at that further. We know how grass fields perform, because that's all we have. We have no turf fields. It is our feeling, if a donor wishes to step up and pay for a turf, we would embrace that. We just don't think the taxpayers should bear the burden of a turf field.
Do you perceive that the donors that would donate to the ad hoc committee project will be equally as happy to donate to yours?
I can't speak to that. It is for the field.
Okay. I look forward to getting the copies.
Okay.
It's the first time we're seeing this.
Okay. I just had a couple of questions. The first is, I'm looking at your Article BB, and just a moment. Can you just, I understand that it's a little hard because, of course, the detail... I don't know how much of the detail of what you described is actually in your article. It might end up being in the recommendation if the advisory committee chose to support it, I suppose. Can you just give us a little precis of how your article that covers the full thing differs from this, the school committee's Article Y that covers the full?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Our warrant article will fix the drainage issue with the additional field there, which is the varsity softball field. It will expand the parking as described by Gale Associates and the school committee. It's identical. It will remove those bleachers. It will remove those bleachers over on the Downing Street side, decommission those. And instead of a 2,200 fixed bleacher system, it's 1,000 seats with those transportable bleachers to accommodate the overflows.
Okay. So, so the, so really, the nub of it here is like from line six, where you're listing drainage and parking issues, replace bleachers, provide multipurpose game facilities, including professional fees, construction of a multipurpose playing field without field lights with associated fencing, landscape and gate improvements, bleacher seating to accommodate no more than 1,000 spectators with a press box atop the home side bleachers. So that's a kind of a summary, but it does include everything that you've presented.
Right. So there are, correct. We presented more than really what's included in there.
I'm just trying to, I'm just kind of trying to figure out how that, how that would work. If town meeting were to adopt, if town meeting were to adopt your article, is it then incumbent upon the school committee to take your plans?
I believe so.
Can they change your plans?
I do not know that.
What if they must be changed?
I do not know that. We would have a number associated with the project.
Right. Ultimately, you would have, you would have to, I mean, if the advisory committee recommended, it would have a number.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But, but in our Warren article, it does say that the school committee...
So they would have to begin the planning process and the permitting process all over again?
Yes. It is my understanding, however, that for Conservation Commission, it is a fairly easy process. We haven't made many changes on that piece. For the planning board, it would probably also be streamlined, because we're reducing the scope, we're reducing the size, so that it is more appropriate, more appropriate for the space and for current activities.
I wonder what would, these are not really questions, these are probably questions for town council, I expect. I'm just trying to figure out the legalities of it. If this article were to pass, and then the article authorizing lights were to pass, we would have inconsistent articles passed. And I don't know what that means.
Could lights be put into your plan?
It specifies without lights. I mean, the advisory committee could make a recommendation that is silent on lights and then allow, then allow town meeting to, I suppose, but I'm not going to second guess...
This article could be voted at town meeting without lights, and another article could be passed with lights.
But if this...
It's possible that that could happen.
If, if the schematic, if the, the drawings are such that lights cannot be put in, because they need, you know, infrastructure, then what happens?
Well, let me take a stab at that. I think what Irma's getting at is a good question, is how can you build something and then you have to put lights on it? If that were to happen, my assumption is that the plan would be modified, because when we talked about lights at the markets field, it was fundamentally putting in conduits before the field was in construction. That was the easiest way to do that. But the size of the lights and all the rest of it would have to be incorporated in that, power sources and all that. I would assume you would use a lot of the proposals that GALE associates had put in.
A question I might throw to town council, and I, we don't know what the sequence of Warren articles are. If this article goes to town meeting and it's amended on the floor to look like the school article, then by definition, do the school plans supersede?
So the articles that would be voted at town meeting are going to include an appropriation and a, and a general description of the work to be performed. You will not be voting on a specific plan, per se, that has to be constructed. Whether it's the proponents' plan through petition or the school committee's plan, plans will change. So we don't vote specific plans where, you know, the conduit is at this elevation and at this exact GPS location. We vote, you know, to renovate or construct athletic fields, bleachers, et cetera, et cetera, and we have, vote an appropriation.
Is there, Ben, could your group take this listing of items and put your price?
Yes.
Decide it, because a question, you're, here we have bleacher removal, landscaping, and fencing.
Yeah, absolutely. I would, I, I think that makes perfect sense to compare the two.
I would presume, and then you're going to have to add in a factor for yours of engineering costs.
Mm-hmm.
Because are you still planning to put landscaping in?
Yes. The landscape buffers remain the same.
Okay.
May I have a copy of that?
Of this?
Yeah.
I'm sure...
I'll give you my copy.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have some questions, I have some questions about how this would work overall.
Yeah, me too.
But I think perhaps at this mo, at this moment, I will open up the floor for maximum of 10 minutes of public discussion, since there's been a great deal of it. So please be brief and don't repeat each other. Would, did you want to speak?
Do you want to make a comment beforehand?
Of course.
Since I was part of the thing, I just would like to thank Ben. I think he has done an exceptional job in supporting the neighborhood for a balanced project and presenting the things. And he has done it eloquently and without being unkind. But he's, and as he's discussed this rationale and the alternatives for the proposal in renovating the field, I just like, want to remind everyone that several previous times, the lighted fields, and the reason for putting this project forward without lights, was, including Ward Street, was voted down by town. Most recently at Ward Street. And that was despite the fact that there was no cost for the lights at Ward Street. So lights have also been rejected, you know, at the high school and many times. But I want to go back to a, in 2001, when then the chair of the planning board was Sarah Corey, and she expressed most eloquently, in my opinion, and she stated, "After careful review of the proposal, it appears that the unique quality of Union Street, a designed scenic roadway, and the area occupied by the high school field would, in all likelihood, be overwhelmed by implementing of this plan. Specifically, the proposed lights and lights would be detrimental effect on the parking, traffic flow, as well as the negative consequences to the aesthetics, safety, and quality of life for the residents surrounding the neighborhood in particular, and the townspeople in general. We encourage the applicant to actively explore other sites within Hingham that would be better suited for such a facility." Today, there's nothing different. The school committee has decided to apply the Dover Amendment and to move forward in getting a lighted field. This complex is in the heart of Hingham Center. They appear to use, they want to have a permanent change to the character of the town. And I was very happy to hear Laura tell us tonight that whatever debt this occurs will be a two-thirds vote. Because I think it's extremely important that a special interest group or any organization cannot exert undue influence on the town and change the character of the town permanently. And part of the reason for putting a two-thirds vote in place for our zoning regulations and for our debt exclusion is to make sure that it is the will of the people, of the town. And I'm glad to hear that that's going to happen. The other thing that tonight became very apparent was we had a person from the fire department, as well as the school superintendent, eloquently speak about the needs for our children and for facilities. And I truly believe that after listening to that, we need, it's important that we don't put those needs aside. They talked about the wants, and to me, this is a need. And, I mean, this is, this is, it's, they talked about the needs, and this is a want. This complex, we have addressed, applies to the drainage issue, it applies to the Title IX issue, it covers the needs, but the want of a lighted, multi-complex stadium, and it is a stadium, the seating is above and beyond what they in their own data showed when the traffic study was doing as to what would be expected there, requiring excessive number of bathrooms, taking away the beautiful open space, those are wants, those are not needs. And I truly believe that the town should be taking the money that is being taken to cover the $325,000, if they go with a $3.7 million project, is my understanding, the other night at a wonderful presentation by Ted on our status, and the advisory has worked so hard for. It's a 15-year proposal, and it needs to be addressed as a 15-year proposal, because every year that we take $325,000, it's going to come from somewhere. It's going to come from the fire station, it's going to come from the police station, it's going to come from the educational budget. And therefore, if we're going to move forward with this project, I really think we need to address the needs, not the wants.
Thank you. 10 minutes of public comment. Let's see, Ms. Falvey.
Chris Falvey, 12 Isaac Sprague Drive. Just a couple of clarifying questions, Ben. Sorry, I'm still not clear. Is turf in your proposal or not?
It's a grass field.
No, I know, okay.
And we would accept a synthetic turf. Someone, if somebody wanted to donate to make it synthetic turf, we would certainly embrace that.
So, but it's not included?
That is correct.
In the $3.3 million number?
That is correct.
Okay. Second question. Who is the engineer that did your plans? One part, that's first part. Second part, who came up with all your cost estimates? Who is a professional?
GALE associates, this is a document, a public document, that was provided by GALE associates. I believe you have the same spreadsheet. This is the one that we've been working from. So GALE associates is as well the engineer.
But when you changed everything?
Well, everything was already on the spreadsheet. It was just a matter of us saying, okay, it's going to be grass, so we're taking out the synthetic.
No, but like when you changed, for instance, you changed the size of the press box from one size to a smaller size. So how did you come up with the cost estimates when you made all those different changes? There were multiple changes that you said in your presentation.
Right.
How did you come up with those new estimates? Did you do it? Did a professional company come in to come up with those estimates? How did you do it?
So the per-seat price of your grandstands is roughly $300 per seat. We took that same price of $300 per seat.
All right. So when you changed the concession stand, when you changed the press box, right, I think, maybe I misunderstood you. I thought you said you made them smaller.
That's right.
So when, how did you come up with, how did you do all your cost estimates?
We overestimated the per-square-footage cost.
So you used GALE's information, is what you're saying, and you just tried to?
They are the engineer. Yes, we use them.
Well, sort of, right? I mean, you used their numbers for a different project, and then you tried to infer what it might be for a smaller kind of press box or smaller concession stand or whatever.
They provided a line item detail.
Okay. All right. Let me just see. Just, then just two quick comments. The comment about, you know, non-open space, this is going to give us more open space? I'm sorry, I don't really get it. I mean, this plan or the school committee plan seems like they're both, you know, open space plans, so I'm not sure I completely understand the point you're trying to make there, other than they have a few more bleachers than theirs and your plan. It's still open space. So I think one of the points you're trying to argue is that this is going to somehow be a better plan for open space? I'm not sure I understand that, but that's all right. You don't even have to comment. What I want to say, and I don't want to get emotional about this, is how discouraged and sad I am that you decided to embarrass the chair of the school committee tonight. I really am. She's been so respectful through this entire process, and for you to stick up her car like that and then say, whose car is this? It's someone in this audience? Really?
We did not ask.
Actually, I did, Carol, sorry.
It wasn't us.
Did you stick up the picture and did you say it was someone's in this audience? Did you say that, Ben?
Yes, she did.
Ben, you said it.
Yes.
It's so, so unfair.
Let me finish.
She has been so respectful. I'm so discouraged. Everyone has been so respectful in this process. People who are for the projects, the neighbors, I think we've been trying to work together. That was really crappy.
Carol, Carol, did I, did I, no, I know, Chris. Carol, did I, did I discuss with you that picture before I put that up?
No.
No, because I didn't realize that was your car.
I didn't. I didn't. That was a joke. That was to, to bring levity. I had no idea.
Okay. Mr. Estes.
Ray Estes, Vice Chair of the School Committee. Just, just a couple, just one clarifying point, and then, and then I wanted to speak to the question that was raised about the, how this would work at town meeting, based on my prior experience with, with a similar situation. Sorry. With respect to the article as written, I don't have it in front of me, but I have seen it. And when I did see it, it looked rather familiar. A lot of the phrasing, in fact, most of it was the school committee's article.
Yes.
And an earlier draft of it was actually, it's been better written since then. But just, just I would point out, the only difference, it seems to me, are the number of seats, turf versus natural grass, the concession aspect. You spoke about drainage, and you spoke about how your article would address drainage that our article does not. Yet the language in your article with respect to drainage is identical to the language in the school committee's article with respect to drainage. So could you please elaborate on how you would propose to address that drainage that the school committee's article does not?
Are you saying specifically changing the language in the Warren article, or how we're going to fix the drainage?
No. All I'm saying, Mr. Burnham, is that you indicated that your Warren article addresses drainage of the varsity softball field that the school committee's Warren article does not. Yet, if you read your Warren article language, the language in your article with respect to drainage is identical to the language in the school committee's article with respect to drainage. So how do you propose to address the drainage for the varsity softball field?
It seems to me there'd be ambiguity on both sides, then, because the language is identical. So for, for us, we've added a line item to replace that field, to rebuild that field in place. If, if your Warren article doesn't address it, then it would be the similar ambiguity in your own Warren article. Honestly, I don't, I don't know the legal ramifications.
Yeah, I don't either. I think what, what we're discussing here is the fact that we're, we're discussing the differences between two plans, which, neither of which are necessarily reflected in the articles. And so it's a real question, how do you get from the article to the plan? And, so that's, I mean, with, with the, with the school committee's plan, the town meeting has already created a committee to come up with the plan, and legally, it would be clear that they would, they're the building committee, so they would continue with that process. Isn't that right? It's a building committee, is it?
No.
Oh, so, so is there no building committee?
No, school committee.
Okay, so it's be the school committee that would do that. Okay. So presumably, the effectuating agency would be the same under the other article. It would be the school committee, correct?
Yeah. I merely wanted to point out that since drainage was specifically spoken to as something that would be different under the petition article, yet the language was identical, that I was just merely asking for some elaboration on exactly how that drainage would be addressed differently.
Okay.
I think that's a good question, and I think we'll ask town council for the ramifications then.
The one other thing I would just say briefly, just to get back to how this would work at town meeting. If you recall, for the special town meeting with respect to the middle school, there was also a petition article initially submitted that directed the school committee to do a number of things. Town council ruled that town meeting could not order or direct the school committee, an autonomous elected board, to do anything. While the language in the petition article does not specifically direct the school committee to do anything, in fact, the school committee voted on the three articles that were submitted to the Board of Selectmen and to advisory. The school committee would then have to approve the petition article, should it be successful at town meeting, and vote to adopt that and to pursue it. The school committee does not need to do that. And I would suggest, not having conferred with my co-members, but that we would be reluctant to do so, since it is not the plan that we had voted to pursue. So I would suggest that there would be a problem where an article at town meeting would be passed... would be passed where there would be no body to carry it out.
That is what I'm trying to figure out, yes. So, Mr. Hoffman.
Tom Hoffman, 3 Sherman Way. Couple of comments. I was a little confused by your diagram with that field hockey field turned sideways. I don't believe that's in the design. Number two, I was sitting right here behind Bill Seymour. I thought he was very clear, and he said they were going to raise what's the current field hockey field and bring it up and fix the drainage. Okay? I thought he was very clear on that, so I don't understand that comment about the fact that it doesn't address it. They're addressing it with a whole drainage plan, and I sat through a four-hour and 15-minute planning board meeting, and a lot of it had to do with drainage and go back and straighten it out, and they're still trying to do that. Okay? I'm not going to get into the lights thing tonight, but I will say, the one thing that keeps bothering me is everybody says the town didn't want lights. The last vote was 62 to 38 in favor of it. Any politician will tell you that was a slaughter victory, all right? We just happen to have a 2/3 supermajority requirement. So, I would suggest to you that 62 to 38 says a lot more people in town would like to have lights. So, we can have the separate lights discussion later. As far as when you're thinking through your positions, all of your positions on turf versus grass, what I want you to do and think about, when Bill Seymour presented his position last fall, I believe it was, with a meeting, and that booklet was handed to you tonight with a 30-year study, I had a big difference with him. I have spoken to eight college athletic directors, or directors of athletic facilities, from MIT, Harvard, Boston College, St. Lawrence, Ohio University, United States Merchant Marine Academy, University of Missouri, and Columbia University. They all have turf fields. They have all told me to a person, a turf field costs an average of $5,000 a year to maintain, and that's amortizing the cost of the cleaning machine after you install it. It takes the foot traffic and replaces the need for three natural grass fields. So, Bill only says two. These people all say three. So, when you start doing the math, like, for the last five years, my fifth child has been lynch field. I've written virtually every check and worked with Little League and football to maintain that place. We are spending upwards of $28,000 to $30,000 a year, as Jay McGrail calls it, the money pit, and he says, these people are crazy if they don't put in artificial turf. And so, I go back to this, and by the way, we can have a debate whether artificial turf is harmful or not. Your alma mater has five artificial turf fields. My daughter's a lacrosse player at Columbia University in New York. They have four artificial turf fields. That's good enough for me. Thank you.
Ms. Falvey.
Carol Falvey from the school committee. Ben, under your proposal, when you're talking about renovating the fields, and I'm assuming with a natural turf, what's going to happen to all of the high school sports during the year that that has to grow and cure? Where are they going to play?
The same problems that we face with the baseball field and the softball fields when those get rebuilt.
Well, no, because we'll have the artificial turf for some of those fields that the kids can-
We're not rejecting artificial turf. We're rejecting that the taxpayers pay for the installation.
Have you talked to any private fundraising groups to get some money for-
No, the Hingham Sports Partnership and the school committee is doing that.
Well, I doubt they're going to be sharing their money with your project.
It's for the fields.
Mr. Pelisier.
Warren Pelisier, 147 Main Street. Well, first of all, thank you for taking this up. This is the first time we get a chance to come in front of you and talk about the project. It's been going along since, actually, since 1993 is when this actually got started, to date us all the way back. I do have one question and concern, Ben, about the project that you mentioned, and when Mr. Robuffo asked, you know, is there something that you would change during your process and your thinking? I thought that Bill Seymour laid out very clearly tonight that if there's not a turf field there, that there would be extreme drainage problems with a natural grass field there that would further need study. He said, and I'm quoting him, he said, "I don't think it would be impossible, but it would be a very, very difficult thing to achieve." So, I'm hoping that you picked that up as well, and you'd find a way to deal with that.
So, I've spoken with Bill Seymour, and you're right, the way you've quoted that. I have spoken with Bill Seymour. It was made clear to me that I wasn't allowed to deal with him directly. I spoke to him once, and I was told that I needed to go through the school department. It was concluded that that would be extremely inefficient use of everybody's time. I am hopeful that the school committee, who is in charge of the funds, the $275,000 to study the fields, would permit me to meet with Mr. Seymour and his team for 30 minutes to have that exact discussion.
It was, I'm bringing that up because the question was posed to you, and you didn't answer the question. So, the question is, what would you do differently? I would want to find out more information about a natural grass field and what its draining prowess would be.
Absolutely. So, it was brought up earlier about the engineering plans for a grass field instead of a turf field, since those haven't been done, but the numbers have been worked up. Again, I would need Mr. Seymour and his team to help us.
And it does seem like it's a very serious issue, you know, with the fact that they have a 30-inch pipe that's going into a 26, or 26 that's going into a 30-inch pipe. But that's just something that I wanted to pick up on, that I think you were trying to bring up along the way. I wanted to talk more about what the work that we've been doing since 2005. 2005 was sort of a banner year. It's when we actually took on this project and really started to look hard at it. And if you look at the number of designs that were presented and the number of locations within our area that were looked at, and the number of times that we looked and re-looked at that, it's countless thousands of times that various committee members have gone through this and given their time. This last go-around was a fantastic process, I think, for me, from a learning process. Number one was bringing it to special town meeting and understanding what the ramifications were at special town meeting, and receiving 87% support to go forward. That's a big number at a big meeting. The largest town meeting that I believe we've ever had, and we got 87% support sitting behind it. In the process, it's not only the support that we got that was behind the project, but it was the process that was going to happen. And it was forming that ad hoc committee that Carol had mentioned, that Tim led so wonderfully all the way through. And it included abutters, it included neighbors, it included people, actually, it included one person that wanted to be on it because she was dead-set against the project and turned around when she learned the facts and supported the project. So, that was a great learning. 26 meetings that went on to vet every single thing, and very proud of the school committee to actually go through and support all of the ad hoc committee's findings. And to bring that to planning, there are some additional concessions, but there are a ton of concessions that happened along the way. We never thought that we were going to solve the problem of the school with parking, but you know what? Somebody has to. Somebody has to. It's not going to go away. We have to do it at some point in time. Why not roll it into this? So, I thank you for your time and your attention to this project, and hope for your support.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Ben about that number when we get to it.
Okay. Hold on, let me, after this guy speaks.
Hi there. Michael Vaughn, 52 Union Street. Just for the record, this last gentleman, Mr. Hoffman, was just saying that the neighbors were contacted. I live across the street, and I was never contacted directly, and neither were any of my neighbors. So, the 25 meetings that Tim did all the work for, most of my neighbors were not informed about it. So, that's one point. You've just had three people get up and attack Mr. Burnham for something about the turf field versus the grass field. He's pretty much said he's open to the idea of a turf field, and yet, we're pretty much just stopping there, pretty much also saying that he's using data that he got from Gail Associates, which they've used themselves, and they're kind of critical of him for using information that they're using themselves, and like, oh, it's going to cost, it's going to cost more money because we're going to have to do it all over again, which is pretty much suggesting that we've got to go with this plan because we can't do it again. If it's the wrong plan, it's the wrong plan. Another point that came up in the traffic board review was that the short 67 spaces of parking, however you slice it, they want to park on the streets. It was suggested in a previous planning board meeting that they're going to have to open a parking on Union Street, Fountain Blow, Stoddard, and Pleasant Streets. I've lived on those, on that corner. My family's been there for 40 years, and if you have people parking on those streets, they're going to be using your backyard as a bathroom, which was the case with me growing up there. So, I don't want to see parking left open brought back, because they had to go to the board of selectmen to stop it, and we'd be coming back to you again. So, lastly, in terms of lights, while nine out of 10 neighboring towns have lights, they're not surrounded by houses. And I've brought up that point before with Tim.
Yes, they are.
The ones that I've looked at, well-
Cohasset. Cohasset, Archbishop.
Please, please, let Ms., please.
Well, do they have 40 houses?
One person has the floor.
Do they have 40 houses? Because the maps I'm looking at, particularly Cohasset's one, there's hardly that many at all. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, we're going to have to bring this to an end, but I got time for one more. You've had your hand up for a while, Mr. Schachter.
Good evening. Andy Schafter, 32 Middle Street. I am on the school committee, but I'm really just talking more as an abutter. First of all, I do support the project that the school committee put forward. I do thank all the residents in town for all their input. I think people have been very respectful, thoughtful, and provide a lot of that. One comment that I heard, though, a couple of times tonight in this presentation, was the historic district and, you know, how it ruined the neighborhood and everything. I just don't want that to be said, that everyone in the neighborhood doesn't support this project, because as you've seen in the Hingham Journal, there's been many neighbors on my Middle Street, on the adjoining streets, that have all written into the paper saying they support this project. So, if, I just, one takeaway I heard tonight was that the historic district, people in the historic district do not support this project. That is not true. I live in the historic district. I'm an abutter. I do support the project. I know a lot of my neighbors do, and they put that in the paper, just FYI. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I think what we'll do, because we do have a couple more things on the agenda tonight, and I'm sorry that we'll be having our next meeting at 8:30 on Monday morning, but that is because of board members needing to be out of town while we're working on these items. So, as of right now, I had scheduled to vote on this, these, all four of these articles on Monday morning because, so that we could get our comments to the advisory committee. So, are we willing to go with that?
No.
Okay. Well-
Maybe talk to advisory committee.
About what?
Holding off their vote.
Oh, no.
Have it all in supplement.
Madam. You and I. Former chairs of the advisory committee. What if the board of selectmen had said that to us?
It's getting late. I lost it.
I don't think we're going to do that.
I will talk to the town administrator.
Okay, okay. All right. For now, I'm going to leave it on the agenda for Monday morning. We do have other items, but I'm going to leave it on the agenda for Monday mornings.
Their seat, hearing, and voting.
We really have to move-
The meeting will be open to the public.
Of course, right here.
Oh, definitely.
8:30 will be televised?
Yes.
It'll be televised.
Yep. Okay. So, thank you all for, thank you, that was a wonderful presentation.
It was very good.
I just have one more thing to add. I want to make a public apology. I want to make a public apology, both to Christine Falvey and Carol Falvey. That was not the intent. I did not know that that was your vehicle. I apologize.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you very much. We do have more items on the agenda, so if you're not staying, if you could leave quickly so we can get on to the other items on our agenda. Okay. Where are we?
We want to send them questions. How do we do it?
11111 Football. It was a baseline. There were 2,000 people there.
I mean, I got, I asked the question. I don't know where their schedule is, but I'll follow up.
Unless people really need the two minutes.
Oh, this is good. The noise bylaw.
Okay. Okay.
Ben, if we have questions-
I'll call you tomorrow morning.
How do we get them?
Hey, folks. We have work to do.
If we send them to him, give him your email.
Okay, I would like to welcome Ms. Rockoff back to the stage. It's late. We're going on to have a discussion on the noise, but nope. No, you're next. That's efficient, we thought.
Well, all right. I thought Tom Hatch was off before.
Oh, no. His has been postponed until Thursday because he couldn't be here tonight. So-
Okay, I apologize for delay.
Oh, no. I'm so sorry. Yes, we have postponed.
He's been sitting here all night.
I'm so sorry. I should have announced that at the beginning. I beg your pardon. Next Thursday, yes.
The advisory committee also on Thursday?
I don't, I don't know about that. So far, we have been unable to schedule a time when he could be here. So, whatever happens next Thursday, we're voting. So, just so you know. I'm so sorry. I hope you had a good time, anyway.
We did send a note to the advisory committee, and they are going to schedule it a little later on their meeting on Thursday, so we all will like it.
Okay, okay, good. We are returning to the discussion of the, could we close the door, maybe? Thanks. To the discussion of the petition article on the noise bylaw. And when we last left this, I had a feeling there was some sentiment on our committee, on our board, that we all likely liked the proposal of having a noise bylaw, that we felt that this wasn't the particular noise bylaw that we were particularly ready to support, and we thought that a process where we put together a committee and had the police involvement, as you did in the creation of yours, and the, some citizen involvement and some public hearings for people to speak on it, that we might come up with a better product for the next town meeting. And when I spoke today with the chief of police, let me know today that that was the route, that he would like to take. A town bylaw is an important thing, and we need to, we need to get it right. So, that's where I am. I just wanted to poll my colleagues about, we're just going to have a discussion about what's going to happen next and see.
Can I make some comments?
Sure. Yeah, sure.
I appreciate the opportunity to make further comments. I also wanted to thank the police department, especially Glenn Olson and Chief Perino for their assistance. In putting this bylaw forward, the main purpose was to assure that all residents in the area had the same noise protection. The town meeting already authorized for some residential areas in the town. It was also to facilitate enforcement of an existing noise regulation that the police department would welcome these clarifications. This article should not be linked directly to the athletic renovation proposal because of current noise regulations, just as it is proposed, just as the proposed new regulations apply to the existing noise from a variety of sources. A number of questions were raised last Thursday, meaning in particular, items of this warrant. And Laura, you as the chair of the committee, you said that you, I should get some legal counsel to address the article wording, especially regarding the decibel levels, despite the fact that I previously went through the procedure you asked me to do and was told when I presented the warrant to you and was thanked, that I had had advice from counsel. So, to review this town, you know, the town warrant. In addition, you were not sure that the advisory committee would be able to review your concerns given the limited time before the town meeting. However, you should be aware that this warrant, the warrant representative from the advisory, However, you should be aware that this warrant, the warrant representative from the advisory, which is now Craig McKay, due to his, his job expertise, that he has agreed to meet with me and others on the weekend. He also already is consulting his firm's acoustics team because of his specialty, and that's why he was put in charge of this warrant article, and it was taken from Dick Ennis and given to Craig. And I have already met with an attorney who suggested new changes, which I believe would address some of your concerns. So, to reiterate, the article merely takes the noise policy already approved at town meeting years ago and applies essentially the same requirements townwide. It is not recreating a new noise restriction for this town. Because you stated last week that since this citizen's petition, we'll still have to go to town meeting, I therefore humbly request that you, the selectmen, postpone further discussion of this article for at least one week, giving me a chance to complete what you asked me to do. My hope is that you will treat each warrant article independent and provide a small amount of additional time to see if we can resolve the concerns expressed in order for the police department to have the tool that they need.
Okay, since you've addressed me directly, I'll, I'll respond. First of all, the question about legal counsel, town counsel was asked exactly one question. Is this article legal for town meeting to enact? In other words, if town meeting, does town meeting have the power and is it properly worded that it could be law if it was enacted? And the answer was yes. That is the only question she was asked. She was not asked, is this a good bylaw? And, and that, those are two very different things. And she was quite, when I got home, I had an email from her saying, I was not asked about anything about the text of this article, only was it actionable or not? And I answered yes.
I was not aware.
So, that, so that is the only question that, that we asked her. And I'm, I'm, I wouldn't, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to, I mean, we can, we can vote this whenever, preferably before the advisory committee does because they like to have our opinion, but, but I'm asking for a different process that's not you and Craig McKay meeting on the weekends, but a hearing process where people can, can look at what's being proposed and, and come and be heard in a, in a, in a more relaxed manner than the time that remains to us before town meeting. That's, that's my main concern. So, that's, I'll just see what my colleagues have to say.
I think a week to review. I haven't seen anything that's been revised yet, and I've heard what you just said. So, I'd like to meet with Beth and talk with her and assess what's the best way to proceed because I have also talked with the police chief, and he, as you adequately have expressed his reservations. And he wants to have something that'll work, and that's the most important thing.
And I agree.
That's where everything, and that's where we all want to get to. What's the best way to get there? We're not talking objectives. I think we're talking the tactics to how to get there. So, if you give me that week, I would address it to your, hopefully your satisfaction.
Okay. And I'm more with Laura and with Chief Perino. I think you have a good idea. This is a good start, but this is very serious. This is going to affect the whole town, and we are now a very diverse town. We have intense development or dense development in the shipyard, where people knowingly buy across from Almanova, and they're paying a million dollars for a condo. The expectation may be different than if you're sitting on five acres in World's End, but I'm more worried about the perception of the public where they've not had the opportunity to come to open hearings where everybody can express their opinion, and also the unintended consequences of some of the particular paragraphs in there and the implication for snow blowers, leaf blowers, lawn mowers, those kinds of things that need to be talked out and understood. And also for parties, gatherings. I read probably half a dozen noise bylaws, which I didn't even know that many existed. And there is in every one of them that I read, an exclusion for school and recreational events, and there's nothing in here for that. So, I think that everything needs to be talked out. A year goes by pretty quickly. I would rather see that year taken so that it's a successful warrant article versus watch it get picked apart like I kind of did to you, which I apologize, but I did it in a good way because I'd like to see a noise bylaw. I know the police would like to see one, but it's got to be much clearer than here and much more widely accepted before we ever go to town meeting.
Okay, can I address your?
Sure.
You stated, one of your areas that you mentioned was the shipyard, and presently, this warrant article is in the shipyard.
Agreed.
And it refers to all of the abutting neighborhoods of that shipyard. It is also, when you talked about Conservatory Park, it exists at Carlson Fields and the DPW to protect the neighborhoods in Conservatory Park in Hillshire, so it already exists there. This is not a new article. This is just giving the same quality of protection for noise to every area of town.
In the two examples you gave...
Well, those are the two you gave me.
Correct. But in those two, when you read the zoning bylaw, and maybe those go away when the townwide bylaw goes in, both of those were directed at industrial applications. The one for the shipyard was at the time, there were light vehicle, light rail vehicles to be built. That's a little bit different than a rather noisy gathering, and they were going to work, as I understand it, some lengthy hours, the shift work often is. So, I think, Beth, if you want this to be really successful, and I believe most of us want this to be successful, I think you need to take the time to do it right.
Right, and I think, I agree, we need to take the time to do it right. We've been meeting for a very long time with the chief of police and with deputy chief Olson. They've put a lot of work into it. There were other people involved as well. And I think personally, it's not expanding it to change the noise levels, the decibel levels. I agree with Laura when she specified that we need to address those. I think the police put in nine items of ways of checking to make sure it was a violation, and I think the attorney had, that has looked at this article, has addressed Laura's issues. I'm just asking for an extension of a week to at least give me, I also have an acoustic engineer through Craig McKay, who has, is addressing with his firm, is this the right article for a town? He did make a statement to me that it is important for towns to have a noise ordinance. He does a lot of work in towns regarding noise. So, to just table it and do another study committee, I'm not sure it will get what you're asking for, and I'm just asking you for a week.
How are you going to plan to have public hearings?
Well, we have a couple weeks. I mean, you have to post them forty-eight hours in advance. Hopefully, once this warrant article is seen, approved, it can be, we can hold, I'd be happy to hold a public meeting. I'm sure I could get the police involved. The big problem is, I do not in any way want this article associated with the fields because when I went to talk to them after I was looking for a noise ordinance, I promised them that this was a noise ordinance that would be to give them a tool and to give the same protection to every area. If it's not related to a field, it, yes, the field is an issue for me, but it's not an issue for some, for other people. This noise article is to take the decibel level that was voted by two-thirds majority at town meeting to cover and protect the neighborhoods of the shipyard and the neighborhoods of the DPW, and I just believe that every neighborhood should have equal protection.
Well, I asked you if you saw those two things connected in any way when you, when we talked on the phone. You said, no, and I don't see them as connected either. And when we do come up with a good noise bylaw, obviously, it will apply to fields as well as, you know, everywhere else. So, I don't, I don't see any connection there either.
Thank you.
So, let's just take a week and revisit next Thursday, as you ask, and we'll see where we are, and we'll have another talk.
Thank you very much.
We'll see where we are then. Okay.
Sorry to take up your time tonight.
Pardon me? Oh, yes, certainly ask a question. I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there was anybody else who wanted to make a comment. Oh, okay.
Ray Estes, ninety-two Fort Hill Street, vice chair of the school committee. Very pleased to hear you say that the proposed bylaw is not associated with the fields project. Just wanted to indicate that twice now, I've heard Selectman Lauder, two different occasions, refer to other bylaws that she has studied in other towns where they make exceptions for educational and recreational uses. During the course of your studying and revising potentially of a bylaw, would you agree to an exception for educational and recreational use?
We have put in the bylaw an exception for daylight hours for recreational, for educational and recreational use of the fields. It is included in the bylaw. It's what exists now. If there would be an extension of those bylaws, we feel that no other neighborhood is being subjected, or I feel, that's my own personal thing, no other neighborhood is being subjected to any difference. This would just apply the exact same conditions to every neighborhood in town.
So, the answer is no?
And there is, no, that's not true. We have put in an exemption already, and there is a process within the procedure to get a waiver. Like I had a wedding, I would have to come. Like I would get my tent permit, so people come for what you, Tom Hoffman recently came for two liquor, one-time liquor licenses. You would have to apply for a waiver for the event that you want that would exceed the levels of the noise. That way, giving every single neighborhood the same quality and protection from noise.
Let me ask Ray's question a different way. If there was a real football game, better known as soccer, that started at six o'clock at night and goes till what, eight-thirty-nine, is that exempt or not?
If there was a...
It's the time.
Depends on the time of the year.
Depends on the time.
Time of the year.
No, time of the year.
Times of the year.
Light out till seven-thirty, early.
Summertime or, yeah, exactly. Eight o'clock, October, it wouldn't.
So, the answer is, it's not exempt.
It's exempt during the daylight hours. So, any athletic activity on all of the school fields and all of the recreational facilities now would be exempt within this bylaw. If there was an activity on any field or recreational use after daylight hours, it would have to come before the town and ask for a waiver. But it would be for any facility, any neighborhood and wanting a party, any whatever, it would need the same process.
Okay, the time is late, and what I'd like to do is reconvene this discussion in a week, as you, as you've asked.
Thank you.
Because we do have another item on the agenda, so we'll see you next week.
Thank you very much.
Okay, last item on our agenda relates to the town's legal right of first refusal on the affordable unit at twenty-three Ridgewood Crossing. And the background on this is that the unit at twenty-three Ridgewood Crossing, which is, appears on the town subsidized housing inventory, is up for sale, and it can legally be sold only to a buyer who qualifies under the affordability requirements unless the current seller can't find a buyer, in which case it is possible that this unit would be turned into a market rate unit and disappear from the subsidized housing inventory, putting us one house further away from our ten percent goal. So, the procedure is that before that happens, the, under the local initiative project law under which this unit was created, affordable, the town has a right of first refusal and can either buy the unit or ident, or elect to seek a buyer for the unit, a qualified affordable housing buyer. And what, if the town were to do one of those two things, we would have ninety days to either purchase the house or to find a buyer for the house. If we, if we do not choose to do that, or if we do not succeed in finding a buyer who's qualified under the affordable housing program, the Department of Housing and Community Development has indicated that they would like, they, they have the next bite at the apple, and they would step in and seek a buyer as well. It has been, there, suggested that one, one possible route is for the housing authority to purchase the property and use it as rental property, like it does the house on Scotland Street, which is a single-family house, it's not physically connected to Thaxter Park. If that was deemed not the right road to go, it's possible that we could purchase the unit and resell it immediately with a permanent affordable housing restriction, in which case this unit would never go, become a market rate unit at all. And I think quite likely the, it's my opinion, just my opinion, that the best entity to do that would be the housing trust because the housing trust has, has some money that it can advance to the costs of the buying and the selling, and housing authority is a little more strapped for funds to, for a project like that. So, that is, that's it, as I understand it. Does any, do you have anything to add about?
You recapped it beautifully.
Okay. Any thoughts or comments about, I mean, I, I would suggest, as, as the member of the affordable housing trust, I would, I would suggest that we, the town, vote to elect, to find a buyer, and that gives us ninety days to figure out what the right answer is. But the first step is, we have to do that, or we will lose the opportunity to do that. And I would personally rather that some entity in the town was doing, making this happen rather than the state.
Is the unit involved in any criminal investigation?
Yes, and I...
Let's have a five.
That's a pretty succinct question.
You know, I don't, it is, and so I don't, I would not, you know, I would, in order to protect the town from any liability, I would not want to characterize anything about those, but I can tell you that it would, that, that getting clear title to the property may be a very lengthy process.
So, does the clock, but does the clock...
No, it will stop the clock from ticking when, when we...
So...
If we can't, if we select to find a buyer, but we can't get clear title, that's not our problem.
Okay, so then our time lengthens to find a...
Lengthens, that's, that's...
That's kind of an easy vote, then.
Yes, yeah, that, that is, okay.
We may be long gone, based on the folder I saw.
So, anybody here have comments or, yes, oh, good.
Bill Salisbury, ten Ridgewood Crossing. I am one of the trustees of the condominium trust. There are two others here tonight. I guess, first of all, I would say that we want to thank the town for helping us with the great difficulty we found ourselves in. We found the building commissioners, past and present, to be very helpful. We found the police department to be quite energetic and helpful, and we found people at the town hall to be quite, quite helpful. So, we thank you.
Okay.
And we don't want to talk about fields.
Thank you for that.
The trustees, of course, have an independence there. It is a condominium, so the common areas are governed by the trustees, and the trustees have sort of broad powers to, to, to manage the condominium. We obviously understand there are to be three affordable units in that, and we have absolutely no problem with that. Ours is kind of more of a practical problem, and we would, we would urge you to try and find a buyer, even if the town had to take it temporarily. We have the right to approve all leases, and we certainly would find it difficult if the current unit holder suddenly became a landlord again. It's taken us two years to get through that and would rather not start again. And we really aren't really crazy about the state as a landlord, and even the housing, we prefer the housing trust to the, to the, to the housing authority, I think, because they're about to become a state agency, so. But we are happy to cooperate with you any way we can to be cooperative, but we don't want to keep you here any later either.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Anybody else comments or questions on this particular item? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, did you, no, no.
Definitely a motion to buy the...
Yes, to elect to, to find a purchaser pursuant to the town's first right of refusal on the affordable unit at twenty-three Ridgewood Crossing.
Okay, you threw the housing trust?
Well, we can figure that out later. I mean, we don't have to make, decide...
You don't have to put that on the motion.
All we have to do is say, we're going to elect to find a buyer, and then we can have time to figure out what the right thing to do is.
Okay.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, you're welcome.
Good, thank you.
This will be an exciting ride. I look forward to this.
Yeah.
Any selectmen or town administrators reports before we...
No.
I think I've spoken to each of you about everything that's gone on this week.
Okay.
I have two. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the water company, with Aquarian, to continue the dialogue. We will have that discussion as part of our agenda for Sunday's town forum, which starts at one o'clock. And the second is an issue that the fire chief has brought to my attention. Fire alarms, we have four of them, have been an issue in the town, and the chief has notified those people who do not have private fire, fire security services of his desire to remove them. And there is a considerable savings that he will incur, so we need to know. He has a target date, I would say, of the spring of two thousand fourteen, so we would like to know if anyone has an objection to that in order to accomplish that removal process.
So, you're talking about fire alarms in commercial buildings which incur...
Fire alarms on, on public property, the fire alarm...
Public property, oh, our fire alarms.
Our four fire, fire...
This is the old-fashioned...
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Our fire alarms.
But, but we have to give notice. But, but we have to give notice, as Zerma will remember.
Which he's done.
Yeah, which he's done twice.
Okay.
And this is like, as if I can hearken back to when we went from central to dial telephone service.
Well, surely, we can ask the town administrator to see if there are any issues with removing these fire alarms, and what we should do instead, because we must need some replacement.
If there's only four of them, then can someone make a...
Well, it's not only four, but it's also the buildings, our, our public buildings too, that will have to be switched over that are right now, you know, if there's an alarm that goes off in some of our buildings, most of our buildings, the call goes right to the fire department. Now, we're, we're gonna have to put a service in, in between that, too.
Right.
Dot, Dr. Gill. Are you here about the fire alarms?
Well, I didn't know you meant that.
Sorry, Dot.
Certainly, this is something that we've been aware of as a potential plan, but given that there would be some cost, possibly significant cost, for someone like us with six buildings plus, I would hope that there is some exploration and a timeline that would allow us to budget for potentially...
Sure.
...extreme costs in terms of making other arrangements.
Well, I think in, Mark was trying to separate these two. There's the four external boxes, which is an issue unto itself, and then, then those. So we'll take that into consideration. I just wanted to make the public aware that this is an issue that we've been talking about in the five years I've been a selectman, so.
For our buildings and your buildings, we'll be budgeting this during the fiscal '15 cycle.
Okay.
Dot, maybe the budget goes under a single place for everything, which would be easier to draw.
Well, or at least a common source, vendor.
Yep.
It'll be a subject of our '15 budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? No, okay, then we have to take this vote, yes. We have one vote on our list that we have not yet concluded. Can I entertain a motion?
Yes.
I move that we sign an employment contract with James McGrail, director of operations at the South Shore Country Club, to expire on June 30, 2015.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.